Call the meeting to order. This morning was invocation from Supervisor Bishop and pledge allegiance by Supervisor Wakamoto. Please rise.
I'd like to take a moment of silence for the victims, the family and friends of the folks involved in the shooting at the Baptist Church in South Texas. Thank you. Heavenly Father, we come before you today to give you honor and praise. We thank you for our great country and we ask your divine wisdom for all of our leaders here today. May we be given the wisdom and courage in the decisions that we make. We ask that you guide and direct our meeting so that it's full of wisdom, productivity, and respect for one another. We thank you for the accomplishments of reaching our goals. We pray these things in your mighty name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Board of Supervisors made by motion recess into executive session to receive legal advice from the board's attorneys on any item contained in this agenda pursuant to Arizona Revised Statutes 38-431-03, portions A, 3, and 4. Chair would entertain a motion to call for an executive session to be held November 20, 2017, at 9:00 AM for discussion consultation with legal counsel in accordance with the Arizona Revised Statutes A, 3, and 4 to discuss items noticed on the agenda with an asterisk.
So moved. Second.
Motion and second. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? On to official business. Number one, discussion of pending legal or contemplated litigation of claims. Mr. Espin.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Committee and legislative reports. We'll start with Supervisor Johnson.
Nothing this morning, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Supervisor Bishop.
I attended the legislative summit in Phoenix along with everyone else here today, with the exception of Supervisor Johnson, and I think we're on the right track to make some good decisions this upcoming year.
Thank you. Supervisor Angus.
Nothing this morning.
Supervisor Wakamoto.
I attended the workforce, La Paz County, Mojave County workforce task meeting, and it was very informative. They have a one-stop shop for Mojave County now, and I was really impressed with the fact that there was a special needs fair here in Kingman, and I understand it's going to be in other cities also soon.
Thank you, Supervisor. And I have nothing else to report. Item number three, county administrator's report.
I have no report today, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number four, approval of the October 2, 2017 Board of Supervisors' regular meeting minutes.
Make a motion that we approve the October 2, 2017, regular minutes.
We have motion.
Second.
And second. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. On to a call of the public. Those wishing to address the board, a call of the public to the public regarding matters not on the board agenda must fill out a form, submit it to the clerk, a call of the public form, request to speak form located in the back of the room prior to the meeting. Action taken as a result of the public comments will be limited to responding to criticism, referring to staff, or placing a matter on a future agenda. Comments are restricted to items not on the regular agenda, with the exception of a consent agenda, and must relate to matters within the jurisdiction of this board. I have several people signed up to speak to the call of the public this morning. Mr. Michael Boone.
When I was here a couple of board meetings ago, Supervisor Watson invited me to bring...
Excuse me, can you give your name and...
I'm sorry. Michael, M-I-C-H-A-E-L, Boone, B-O-O-N-E, 2210 Palaverdy North, Lake Havasu City. Supervisor Watson invited me to bring any kind of questionable things, I thought, to him and to county council, and there's a couple of things that I have some concerns about. All the board members know I've been requesting some documents and looking into a few things. There should be some kind of ordinance prohibiting people's campaign managers from getting lion shares of contracts that the county has. In one particular situation, Sheriff Schuster's campaign manager, Jim Leeson, is operating a nice little cottage business within the sheriff's department, selling memberships to front sight to deputies and selling them to search and rescue. And up until a few days ago, his website was advertising for his benefit, members of the sheriff's search and rescue unit shooting at his range. Very quickly, that's been taken down. But there needs to be, you know, there's a lot of money being spent, and I know I beat you up enough about money, but there's some positive things. I think looking at some ordinances review. For example, you know, people sitting as judge pro tems and justice of the peace should have a law degree. You know, the gas station attendant shouldn't be able to sit as a justice of the peace or making legal decisions that affect people's lives. Number two, there's not a whole lot of participation because people can't get here. Even President Trump has got a Skype system in place where people can participate. Maybe you can look at a Skype system in your districts where people that really want to participate can go to that office or go to that library and participate via Skype. It's not that expensive to put a program together like that, and that actually serves the public. So those are some concerns that I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jennifer Jones Esposito, candidate for the Arizona House of Representatives. I live at 3211 East Snavely Avenue, Kingman, Arizona. I'm here today to bring up three issues that are of concern to me. As a property owner in the Golden Valley Improvement District, and having to drive, as I've stated previously, on Shinnarump, which has multiple signs on the interstate as if it's something important, and I believe that it is, and it's only paved in sections, paved, unpaved, paved, unpaved. And County Public Works has to go out every time it rains and grade it over and over and over again. And I'm reminding this board that you managed to find enough money to pave Legend Ranch, which has very few cars on it, nowhere near the amount of traffic that Shinnarump has. It affects first responders, fire, paramedics, ambulance, who get stuck and can't get out. And, you know, I've been told, I believe, previously, well, you know, because it goes across the wash, you would have to, you know, engineer it and culverts or something, you know. But Chino crosses the same wash on the north side of the highway, and it's just chip sealed like Legend Ranch. There's no need for it. The county needs to stop wasting money redoing a road over and over again when they can do it right the first time. The second thing I'd like to address is the upcoming proposed issue with the Golden Valley Improvement District. I think the biggest problem this county has is its business model. You know, bureaucrats who would never survive in a corporation working for me say, this is what we want to do, now how do we raise this much revenue? That's the wrong business model. The business model is, how much are we taking in? What are the projected revenues? And what can we do with that money to its best and highest use of the public dollar? I think that an advisory board, like the numerous other boards that exist for county operations, should be created prior to this board taking any action on the improvement district where I own property, and so do many other people. And lastly, I would like to address a comment that upset me and has been on my mind, and Supervisor Johnson, you know how much I respect you and how much I actually like you, but you made a comment about the libraries, and this seems to be a pervasive attitude amongst a lot of people that have served on this board, is you know what you sign up for when you buy property outside of the cities. So I would just like to say in all fairness to all of my friends and supporters in Havasu, you also know what you sign up for to pay in taxes when you buy a house in Lake Havasu City. You know, fair is fair. I bought property in Golden Valley. It has a library. It has a lot of other services. That's what I signed up for, and I know a lot of those people would like to see that not taken away. Thank you.
Thank you. Leigh Anne Hogland Smith.
Good morning. Leigh Anne Hogland Smith, 3981 South Centennial Road, Golden Valley, Arizona, entering my eighth month in this great county, and I want to thank those supervisors who voted to keep the rural libraries open. Thank you. At the Golden Valley Harvest Days, many people came up to me and spoke how appreciative they were of that action. But during that discussion, I heard two words, a phrase, and as I heard those words, I looked above the sign up there. It says Mojave County. It doesn't say Lake Havasu. It doesn't say Kingman. It doesn't say Bullhead City. It says Mojave County. You represent Mojave County, especially the rural citizens who have no other voices. You are here to ensure their health and their welfare. And additionally, I noticed what's printed in your request to speak. There is an implication of respect, and you deserve respect. We who come up here do attempt to respond respectfully, and conversely, respect should be given back. My parents said, respect is earned, and it's a two-way street. And when I heard the phrase, "you people," said with a little derision, said negatively, I was a little offended. I pay the same property tax rate as any other community citizen, if it's in Lake Havasu, Bullhead City, and we deserve respect. We're supporting, and looking at the population growth, your growth in Mojave County is not in Lake Havasu, which is a lost population. It's not in Bullhead City, which is basically maintained. The population growth's been between Kingman and in the rural areas. I'm just asking, give us the respect that you want us to give you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Mike Fortino. I just bought property out in Golden Valley on Colorado and Ship, 6101 West Ship, Golden Valley. Moved here about three months ago. A little bit of my background is I was a builder in three different states. I moved here. I'm retired. I'm a vet. I bought some property, and I want to move my RV onto my property so that I can build my house. I want to get out of the situation that I'm in, RV park, paying X amount of dollars when I own my own land. I've never run across so many permit applications have I had to fill out here in this county. I like it here. That's why I chose to buy some property here. But being a vet, I own my property. I own my RV. Why do I have to pay, it's a total of $500, to park my RV on my property? I was told a couple of months ago, the RV permit was between, what, $50 and $75? Now it's $375 plus another 150 for God knows what. Too much, guys. We need to either bring it back down, or I'll go live on BLM land for free, right? Can I move every 14 days on BLM land? 100 feet over. I own this property. If that's what it takes, I'll put my RV on my property, and I'll move it 100 feet every 14 days. It's ridiculous. I'm not really concerned about the amount of money, it's how many times I have to pay different permits. I just addressed a permit situation of $70, I think, or $60 to verify the property that I own, to get my mail delivered there. Really? I have a deed that has my address verification on it. Luckily, the, I can't remember his name in the post office, he's got a brain, and he realized, oh, it's verified. Go put your post office box up. $60 for a permit for me to put it on my own land to get my mail? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Hollins, Wayne Hollins.
Good morning, Wayne Hollins, 4825 North Mormon Flat Road, Golden Valley. I just attended the Community Free Trash Day in Dolan Springs on Saturday, and I've made three or four of them earlier this year. Great service, great for the community, get rid of a lot of trash, but the thing I noticed is that everybody there had a vehicle, truck, trailer, capable of hauling trash from their residence to the dump. So why we're doing a cleanup day where those same people are bringing their trash to a short distance for us to haul to the dump and doing it for free? I mean, it's a great service, and we got a lot of trash out of the community, but that trash should have been gone. We're training them to save their trash until trash day, so they got six months of trash built up at their house waiting on this free trash day. So then we're paying X amount of money for the dumpsters and the people to man the dumpsters and hauling them to the dump, when if we had a free trash day at the dump, those same people, because obviously they have transportation, could haul their stuff to the dump that day and dump it for free. They could keep track of it at the dump. I mean, they got computers and everything. And then bill the county in that whatever you're paying for the dumpsters at these community cleanups, that would cover a whole lot of trash to go into the dump. I mean, look at my, the Golden Valley Cactus Cleaners, we've, in two and a half years, we've cleaned up over 203,000 pounds of trash off of the Golden Valley. Well, that 100 tons, that's, what, $3,600? That's a drop in the bucket, you know? So it's not a big expense, but let's quit training the people to do this for free, make it where they have to take their trash to the dump on a regular basis, and then we can do something within the community that will clean up the community and not clean up an individual's lot, his house, his trash that he should have cleaned up himself. You know, there's still lots of trash out there to clean up in the communities. I can show you to it anytime you want to see it, you know? So it's a great service, and it's a great attempt to do something, but I think there's more effective ways to do that. And then earlier in the year, the sheriff's department did an emphasis patrol out in Golden Valley and other areas of Kingman. I didn't hear any results of the statistics on if they caught people, if they didn't catch people, or whatever. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hollins. Our next person to speak is Kathleen Michler.
Good morning. Kathleen Michler, 5485 North Laguna Road, Golden Valley, Arizona. And again, I got to come out here and say thanks to the Parks Department. On social media this weekend, there was a posting about some vandalism at the Veterans Park in Golden Valley. They said it was disgusting. It was just the worst they'd ever seen. So this morning, on my way to the meeting, I thought I would drive by there and take a look at it, and I was just shocked. I drove by, and two county trucks are there fixing the vandalism as we speak. So I just want to thank the Parks Department again.
Okay, that concludes our call to the public. Onto the consent agenda. The following items listed under the consent agenda will be considered as a group and acted upon by one motion with no separate discussion of said items unless a board member so requests. In that event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion and action. Supervisor Johnson, do you have anything to remove this morning?
Nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Supervisor Bishop?
Nothing this morning.
Supervisor Angus?
34, please.
Supervisor Wakamoto?
Nothing.
And I have item 10 and item 16. So Chair would entertain a motion.
Chairman Watson, I make a motion that we approve consent agenda items five through 57, minus items 10, 16, and 34.
Thank you. We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any further questions? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion carried. Onto item number 10, then. I remove this item at the request of Wayne Hollins, having to do with the renewal of the landfill. Mr. Hollins, would you like to speak for just a minute on this item?
Thank you, Chairman. Wayne Hollins, 4825 North Mormon Flat Road, Golden Valley. I see we're extending the contract for the landfill, and that's one item, I think, that would do a tremendous help of stopping some of the dumping in the desert. Would be longer hours at the landfill, and I'm sure that wasn't discussed in the negotiations there for the landfill contract. Seven days a week and a couple hours more a day would, I mean, I know it's going to cost more money, but it's also going to bring in more trash, so that hopefully would pay for the additional labor and everything. And then, right now, the closing time is at 3:00. But if you go out there at 2:45 with a load of trash, they may let you in, but they're going to let you know that they clove at 3:00, and you got to be out of here at 3:00. Well, if the closing hour's at 3:00, if you got there at 2:55, you should be able to go dump your trash. I mean, we've had people earlier in the year get up there about a quarter till, and they were cuffed up for being that close to closing time. Well, you got to be out of here. Come on, the sign says 3:00. 3:00 is 3:00, not 2:30. If that's the case, change the hours on the sign, you know? We're not, again, that's one of the biggest things we can have to stop the illegal dumping is more opportunity for them to take it to it legally, because they go out there at 2:45, can't get in the dump, so they go back across the highway there and dump it alongside the road, and then I got to pick it up and haul it to the dump for them, you know? So I know it gets dark early this time of year, but, and it's kind of, you don't want them out there in the dark, but, so in the wintertime, have it open until dark, and in summertime, have it open until 6:00, you know? That'll help the illegal dumping more than anything else that we can do, I believe. You know, that's not the only thing we need to do, but, you know, it won't fix everything, but that'll be a big help in not having so much dumping out there.
Thank you, Mr. Hollins. I'll take that under advisement. Thank you. I make a motion to approve extension of the agreement for the renewal option for the municipal waste system.
So moved. Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carried. Onto item number 16. This was requested by Mary Ann Kuntz to address this item. Ms. Kuntz? Mary Ann Kuntz? Would you like to address item 16?
Only if it's disputed.
Only if it's disputed. Okay.
Chairman Watson, make a motion.
I don't see a lot of dispute.
I'll make a motion to approve, item number 16.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further questions? Discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carried. Also have a request from Michael Boone for item number 34. Mr. Boone, would you like to come to speak to item number 34?
Michael Boone, 2210 Palaverdy North, Lake Havasu City. First of all, I was impressed on number 25, number 26, and number 27 on the consent that you guys actually went out and got some grants to offset some taxpayer costs. So that tells me I know you know how to do it.
Thank you.
So whoever the brilliant county worker is that did that, maybe ought to make an appointment with Sheriff Schuster and give him some education on how to get grants. I'm opposed to item 34 of buying these vehicles. As I've said in multiple different times I've been here, you can buy refurbished vehicles from two different organizations, one in Anaheim and one in Texas, and those cars come out looking like they're brand new. If you don't have the address, I'll be happy to give it, and you can get a quote. But buying vehicles and keep giving deputies vehicles, I think every deputy has a car in this county. Well, if you're going to have a car, then use it correctly. Do your beet realignments. I know the sheriff must know how to do that. And put cars that people are taking home in the beets they work, so they're not two and three cars driving from Lake Havasu City to Fort Mojave or Golden Valley to start their job. I mean, I've worked for the city for years, and we didn't have cars like that, only on-call detectives and SWAT. So somebody needs to look at what Sheriff Schuster's doing with these vehicles. It's like a golden parachute. Anybody that comes to work for him, here's a car. So there are grants out there for K-9 vehicles. He has access to those databases. I don't as a civilian. Department of Homeland Security, the same place you went for this, because you have an airport, has a grant for Canines. I believe a local law enforcement agency in Nevada just got two Canines and the vehicles fully equipped under a grant like that. I wish I had access to those grants, because I'd do the work for Schuster and give him the opportunity to use it or not. But I think, again, we need to, just because it's a consent and it's on the budget, that doesn't mean you have to approve it, especially with the budget going the way it is and the overage, that should come out of there and hold back and see if there's some alternatives. Every deputy does not need a new car, and this constant purchase of vehicles throughout the... the county needs to be re-looked at and looking at the fueling costs. So, I just gave a simple solution of how to help with the sheriff's situation, not that he'll listen to it. But there you go. The stuff with cars, somebody's got to get a hold of these cars. Insurance, gas, maintenance is killing us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boone.
Chairman Watson, I make a motion that we approve item number 34.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the approval of item number 34. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed? Motion carried. I believe that completes our consent agenda. And before we go into the public hearings, I would like to change the numerification of our order here and move item 73 to the front and center. Item 73 is the discussion, possible action for the approval or denial of the park development agreement with Mojave Valley, Fort Mojave Community Park, and an update for the current status of the intergovernmental agreement with Colorado River Union High School District for the operation and maintenance of the Mojave Valley, Fort Mojave Community Park. This has been continued from the October 2nd meeting, 2017. Supervisor Johnson, I believe this is the item that you brought back?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I don't know that I have anything more to add to it. It was just something that has been going on for a long time, and there was discussion over whether the county was going to take the park over or not, and that's why I brought it back, so that we had that settled once and for all.
Thank you, Supervisor Johnson.
Could I speak on this? I believe that what happened is there was an agreement between the Mojave Valley Park and the county, and what was said was the park would be completed, or there was a 12-month period, which agreement would be brought forward by one or both parties. And I believe that's what Mr. Esplin had a question about. But this park down in Mojave Valley right now is probably the best example of community working with government. People have gotten together as a community to put together this park. They put in a lot of time, a lot of effort, a lot of volunteer work, and I'd like just to change the last part of the agreement that's already been passed to say, upon MVP advising that it has substantially completed the park, MVP will assign the lease to Mojave County for the park and for park and recreational purposes for 25 years. I just think that was a glitch in the understanding that had already been passed, and so if we could do that, right now, the park is costing the county nothing. I believe Superintendent Frye said last time he was here that it's in his budget for the school to maintain the park, and right now, the community park has obtained grants to do further improvements at no cost to the county. So, if we could just clarify that, if that's what needs to be clarified, I'd like to move that Mr. Esplin move on that.
Thank you, Supervisor Wakamoto, if I may. Chairman Watson?
Certainly.
I appreciate that this was brought back, and so that I think, hopefully, we can clarify a couple of things. The agreement that Supervisor Wakamoto was referring to, it was the one dated April 6, 2015, and the relevant language that Supervisor Wakamoto was discussing was paragraph 3. Upon completion of proposed improvements or within 12 months of the execution of this agreement, whichever is first, MVP agrees to lease the subject property to Mojave County for park and recreational purposes. I think that's the language that Supervisor Wakamoto would like to have changed, because as it states, within 12 months, whichever occurs first, clearly, we've already, we've passed that deadline. The parties can, by agreement, amend or change the agreement. Two parties to a contract do that pretty regularly. It's a pretty common thing. Not always, but sometimes two parties, for whatever reason, can't reach what their end goal was or what they want to do, or maybe something has come up where they say, you know, we need to change things. And so, the two parties can amend that if they wish to say, well, let's get this and do this and change this. So, in this instance, what we can do is we can ask or talk with MVP to see if about, see if they'd be willing to agree or to amend the agreement to allow exactly what Supervisor Wakamoto proposed, that upon their determination that the park is complete, they will then turn it over to the park, to the county for leasing.
And I believe their preferred language would be substantially complete.
Yes.
And in discussing, you know, it may be several years before that that actually occurs, and for this to occur and to us, for us to extend and change, modify this agreement would be, would benefit Mojave County and provide more flexibility for the improvements that could go into that park.
Thank you, Mr. Esplin.
Chairman Watson, I believe there are some people in the audience who'd like to speak to this item.
I see a number of people just walking in and also sitting. Mr. Ermy?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. The board of supervisors, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. My name is Medea Azami. I live at 1896 Clear Lake Drive in Fort Mojave, Arizona. Absolutely, you know, we are totally in agreement with Supervisor Wakamoto. All we are asking for is the opportunity to allow us to continue making more improvements to the park. As you all know, the park is being built by volunteers. I would say about, if I want to just sum the number of people that are working at the park, it exceeds 150 people and businesses and, you know, entities that are coming together. So, we would really appreciate the opportunity to let us continue working with the community to further enhance the park, which is, as, you know, Supervisor Wakamoto mentioned, is not going to cost the county a penny. We would like to enhance it further until we exhaust all of our effort, and then we would be able to come to a transition to the Mojave County. And I would say that, you know, right now, we're looking at about maybe three years or better that, you know, we have, because we still have some projections for like a, for example, concession stand for the fields. We have some additional projects that we have for the basketball courts, et cetera, that it is on the plan, and we have a path to get to there, and we would like to continue working on that project if you allow us. And again, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today, and if you have any question, I'll be more than happy to answer.
Thank you. Any question for Mr. Ermy? I believe we're probably going to get to exactly where you want to be soon. Anyone else wishing to speak to item 73? Mr. Ayler?
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Watson, Ms. Chairman, and members of the, of the board. My name is Dan Ayler, and I am, I am here actually on behalf of the Legacy Foundation. You know, we've, with the foundation, one of the most important things to us on virtually any grant that we make is that the project involved is a sustainable project. And I would tell you that but for the fact that Mojave County agreed, or we certainly believe that Mojave County ultimately agreed to take this project over, we would not have made a contribution to the project. Actually, there were three, I believe, distinct contributions totaling $495,000. As far as we're concerned, the Legacy Foundation is concerned, the very important element is that the commitment for ultimate turnover and the sustainability of the project, whether it is this year or two years from now, is that the 25-year period that we believed was the commitment of the county actually occur. You know, I think our last contribution to this project was for the actual lights, not the installation of the lights, but the actual lights that are here. Here in Mojave County, they are not yet erected. But I mean, that is how recently we have made, again, a significant contribution to this project. And I certainly concur with Mr. Azami that there are more things to do down there. There will always be more things to do down there. My best analogy is, you know, I started construction on my own personal residence about 18 years ago. I was probably substantially complete 10 years ago, but it isn't finished yet. You know, I think the important thing is that when the committee, you can ask my wife, by the way, if you want validation of that, that the committee be in a position when they believe they have substantially completed and gone as far as they can go, that at that point in time, the county will, in fact, as the foundation believed to be the case, will be in a position to take it over, and appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ayler. Supervisor Wakamoto?
No, I believe Mr. Sherrill.
Mr. Sherrill?
Good morning, Charles Sherrill, 1571 East Court Road. My family was the, we donated the land for the lease. This park is a great vision for our area. We've had pickleball courts poured, tennis courts, the community, all the contractors. You can't believe the support that we've had for this park, and I mean, it's really good for the youth. Saturday, we had over 25 kids come down and hoe weeds and fill in dirt, and the kids in the community have really made a great effort of making this park, and I'm very proud of it, and I'm very proud of our community. And if you allow us to give us another year or two years or whatever it takes to bring this in, we're going to get more community development, we're going to get more community people behind it, and we will be, build a park that you'd be very proud of. I would ask that everybody comes down and look at the park. I believe that most of the, I think all of you supervisors have been there, with the exception of Buster Johnson, and I would like to ask him if he would please come down and look at the park. We would sure like to show him around. About six years ago, we asked him to come down and please help us devise some kind of a method that we could build a park. He denied us at that time, but I would sure like to ask him to come down, look at the park, because I know all of you have come down, and I think you're amazed at how well it looks, and we've got a ways to go, but we will get there, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Sherrill.
Chairman Watson, I do have, I don't know if it's the board's pleasure, but I do have a video of the park that was taken at the Easter egg roll, and something like, how many, how many Easter eggs did you put out there at the park that day?
Thirty thousand eggs.
Thirty thousand eggs and...
...by over of, you know...
Right.
...dropping. You'll see it on the video.
Yeah, I, would you like to see the video of it, or I can just direct people to go see it if they want to? It's a short little video. It's up to you, you're chairman.
We've got a real long agenda today.
Okay. Well, if anyone wants to see it, go to Google and search Mojave Valley Community Park, and you'll see several videos that come up on that, and I suggest you do it.
If we could schedule the video for another meeting, that'd be fine, but we have a long agenda today.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. Okay. So, the issue is substantially complete, is that correct?
Yes, until, yes. Should I just, once again, upon MVP advising that it has substantially completed the park, MVP will assign the lease to Mojave County for park and recreational purposes for 25 years.
Is that in the form of a motion?
I make...
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is for Mr. Esplin. On the contract, there was a force, or I think we're getting a little confused, what we voted on at the beginning was to give $250,000 or reimburse for improvements, and then to come back to see about accepting the park. We never have, the board has never voted on accepting the park, is that correct?
To my knowledge, the board has not voted to accept the park. We have not done that yet.
Thank you, and that's what I was getting at, and Mr. Hendrix has the answer, he might not. If the park was to be taken over, it's my understanding that would be, what, a quarter million dollars, around there, to maintain the park?
Mr. Hendrix?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Johnson, I don't remember the exact figure, but it was substantial. It was between, I know there was one figure of $180,000 that if we contracted for the maintenance of the park, it was, you know, in that realm, so I don't doubt that. But currently, what we have before us is an agreement with Mojave Valley LLC that once the improvements are completed and that the county will enter into a lease agreement. So, no, we haven't entered into a lease agreement yet, because that hasn't come before the board, but county has agreed that we would enter into the lease agreement once, once the improvements are completed or within 12 months. You're going to modify that last condition to say, once the improvements are completed, so that that is some implied reference that we would, are quite an implied reference that the county would enter into a lease agreement, and currently regarding the maintenance, it was supposedly a three-way partnership to where the school is using the facility, and the school was going to operate and maintain the facility, and the county would hold the lease, and our portion was a 20, 200, a quarter of a million dollar contribution for improvements.
So, I wasn't here...
But I think, it might have been implied, but I think that was brought, said that the county would consider a lease at that time. We've never voted on going into a lease, and it's ironclad. That's what I was trying to get at. And as far as them, Mojave Valley Park wanting more time, right now, the contract is basically null and void, because we had 12 months to fulfill it, which we didn't do. So, whatever they do, they could bring it back when they're done and approach the board and say, we would like the county to take over this park. There doesn't need to be any kind of continuation of an agreement that is already passed due. Is that correct?
If, I believe, in working with our county attorney's office, the course that they were recommending to Supervisor Wakamoto is to modify the existing agreement, because if, and I'm not, I don't want to speak for Attorney Esplin, and he can help me out here if he wishes, but currently, we have an agreement to enter into a lease with the Mojave Valley LLC. You know, if you all discard that agreement, there is no obligation by the county, and I would caution you with that action. And it seems to me, just from an administrative standpoint, what we need to do is exactly what Supervisor Wakamoto recommended in modifying the agreement, if the board so chooses to move forward with the terms and conditions.
Well, I believe that you have an agreement with the board, with the park board, and due to the fact that we did not act on it, it didn't happen. I mean, you, the county did not present a lease to the park board, and the park board was continuing to work until it substantially exhausted all its ability to bring forth the best possible park they could bring, they could give the county. Right now, it costs the county nothing. They are working diligently to provide a park for the people in this area. It is a commitment to the youth of the area.
Yes, I understand.
Okay, it is a commitment to the youth of the area, it is a commitment to the community, and we are a community, all the river communities, all this area. We are a community, and it's costing us nothing right now. And just to modify the last few words, due to the fact that we didn't act on what we were supposed to do, is all I'm asking.
And, okay, Chairman, may I, words are important.
Yes, they are.
This says, upon completion of the improvement... This says, upon completion of the improvements or within 12 months of the execution of this agreement, whichever is first, MVP agrees to lease the subject property to Mojave County. And, you know, that's the term and condition that we would want to modify, but I'm sure they agree to lease the park to Mojave County. So, basically, I don't see there's a substantial breach in anything that occurred, and a modification would be appropriate.
And I believe Supervisor Wachamoto has made...
Mr. Chairman, for Mr. Esklin, I'm sorry, the communications went down there for, I don't know, about a minute or so, so I didn't hear everything that Mr. Hendrix or Supervisor Wachamoto finished with, but for Mr. Esklin, the contract is basically over with, because we had our 12-month period. Is that correct?
It's not necessarily over with. Whenever there's a, if there's a portion of a contract that is deemed at some point invalid, it doesn't necessarily invalidate the entire contract. Occasionally, it does, occasionally, it does not. Every contract is different, and many times, a contract will have one provision that maybe didn't work through, or it was, for whatever reason, didn't go through. It does not necessarily invalidate the entire agreement. So, I wouldn't say the entire agreement is void. I couldn't say that right now. What I can say is that we have an agreement with MVP. I think it's still valid. I think one section of it needs to be amended, because neither party went through with it. Both parties didn't go through with that portion of it, and so it'd be appropriate to amend it. But I cannot say right here that the agreement is invalid. Court would have to make that determination, thinking that this paragraph would invalidate the entire agreement, but I couldn't make that conclusion right now. The better practice would be to amend it by agreement of the parties, if that's what the parties want to do. Both parties would have to agree to it.
But I guess, from what you said before, and from what I'm reading, our agreement was to reimburse for a quarter million, which we did, and then, in 12-month period, to come back to see. It wasn't written in stone. We never, the board never voted on it to accept the park. Not saying the board wouldn't vote on it, but I'm saying that that has not been decided as of yet. But as of today, if the park, without an agreement, they can still go ahead and do whatever they're going to do, and then bring it back at a later time for acceptance by the board without any kind of continuation. Wouldn't that be true?
They could do that, but there's already an agreement in place, and it would muddy the waters if they were to do that. I think it'd be better that the parties have things in writing, and we stick with what is in writing. And that's why the recommendation from our office was that we, that if the, if both parties want this agreement to continue, that we amend Paragraph III to reflect that. But to answer your question, yes, they could, but it wouldn't be a course of action that I would recommend, just because then you have this agreement that's kind of just floating out there, and I'd rather that the two parties work together in writing, saying, this is what we're going to do, and this is what our intentions are, and so forth. So, I would recommend still that the parties try to have a written amendment stating, this is what our intentions are and our goals.
Then I move...
Okay.
Would you agree that when something comes back, it has to be voted on by the board for acceptance? That this is not ironclad, that the county is going to take this over without a vote?
You mean the park?
Right. We've never voted on taking the park.
That's correct, and I think that, I would say that the park, that the county would have to vote to accept the park. And I think that's our intentions are, to get that, get to that point, but I think we would have to do that, yes.
Then I move that we amend the last part of the agreement that we have, using, do you want me to read it again?
Please, if you will, for the record.
Okay. Upon MVP advising that it has substantially completed the park, MVP will assign the lease to Mojave County for park and recreational purposes for 25 years.
Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, Supervisor Johnson?
I guess it would be for the county attorney. I don't know, that would be a legal motion, for the way it was agendized, because now we're voting on acceptance of a park?
I would say that we're not accepting the park. At that time, when MVP is done, they would then present it to the board, and then what would happen is, we would have to, what I envision at least, is there would be a lease agreement. At that point, they would say, we are ready to give it to you to lease, and then we would have to approve it. We don't want to approve anything that we haven't seen yet. Let's say they put something in a, and I'm not saying they would, but if there's something in lease that we don't necessarily agree with, we want to talk with them, work with them, and just like any time you enter into a lease agreement, you want to see exactly what you're getting into, and you want to be able to read the terms of it. So, I would say we're not accepting the park at that time, but what they do is, they would bring it back and say, here we go, we're ready to go, here is the lease, and at that time, we would have to decide whether we want to accept the lease at that time. Keep in mind, too...
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that was clarified, so that we all understood that we weren't agreeing to accepting the lease.
Yes, I would say that that is correct. I think we want to, I think the county wants to, and I say we, I mean the county, the county wants to, we want to get there, but we'd want to see what the terms of that lease are, so that we can say, okay, this is what we're getting into. But right now, we're just not ready yet, and it sounds like MVP's not ready yet. They still want to get some things done, and get some improvements done, and work on some things, and at that time, whether it's two years from now, three years from now, four years from now, at that time, that's when we would, they would present the lease to us, and then we would have to formally accept it, if that was our wish, if that was the board's wish. So, if you want to change the terms of your motion towards the end of it, just to suggest that the parties, as you said, when MVP is ready, or whatever, that they feel that they have substantially completed the park, that they would then present the lease to the county for our approval, something along those lines.
Chairman Watson?
Okay.
And then, if Supervisor Wachamoto would be amenable to her motion, maybe, and it's just a suggestion, that we had yearly updates or something, so that, you know, it's not five years, 10 years from now, and I say it's going to go on that long, but, you know, so we had it, it's something that comes back before the board to say, yeah, we're here, we're not ready yet, we're still doing something. I think that might help with, you know, so it doesn't get lost again in the paperwork. And just for clarification, Mr. Sherrill made a statement that they invited me up. I have never talked to Mr. Sherrill, to my knowledge, in my entire life, and I've never discussed the park, Mojave Valley Park, only at board meetings, so his statements were untrue. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Bishop.
Yes, I just wanted to say that I would support this amendment, but I agree with Supervisor Johnson, when MVP gets ready for us to consider taking over the park, it would all depend on our financial position, whether or not we could afford to do the maintenance on the park. So, I would support this amendment, though, until that time comes.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I may, in discussing offline, to an extent, with our attorney, Supervisor Johnson is correct, the motion, or the discussion of possible action that the board is considering is to approve or deny the park development agreement. What, just to keep everything clean, what I would suggest is the board direct staff to bring back the amendment as Supervisor Wachamoto recommended and re-agenedize it for our next upcoming meeting, and have the board vote on modifying the agreement.
I like that.
And to chime in on that, and we, what I would suggest is, we could talk then with MVP to get the exact language of what we want to do, and that way, they can sign it, we can present it for the board, and they can, the board can then decide whether they want to approve it or not.
Okay. We currently have a motion on the floor by Supervisor Wachamoto.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
That it's not, it has not been seconded, as I understand it. So... Yes?
May I approach?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. Mediasarmi, 1896, Clear Lake Drive, for Mojave. When Mr. Sherrill mentioned "we" meant, you know, from our side, I was the one, actually, in the parking lot out here, at that time, there were only three supervisors here. I had the opportunity for a few minutes to speak with Supervisor Johnson. I invited him, Mr. Johnson, to attend to the meeting. He mentioned, what, four? And that was the exact comment. And I mentioned that, you know, we have, we are trying to open up a park, we want to work together, and as a leader, and obviously, he was our supervisor for that area, would like to have him. And the exact comment that Supervisor Johnson mentioned to me is, find $5 million, and then we will talk. That was the comment we had at that time, and just want to make sure that, you know, when the statement was, I said that Mr. Sherrill's statement was untrue, that was not the fact. He mentioned "we," meaning the park committee, so I just want to make sure that I clarify that. And for your information, we exceeded the $5 million. The retail value of the park is $8 million right now. So, I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
You're welcome, and I appreciate that. Chair would...
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Johnson?
...back and forth, but I do not remember any such conversation, and I wouldn't say $5 million to anybody on a park.
Okay, thank you. Chair would entertain a motion then to send this item back to...
Well, if she would like to amend her motion, because I do have a motion from Supervisor Wachamoto.
We have a motion, but no second now.
Correct.
Would you care to amend that motion?
You can amend it as, and propose what Mr. Hendrix has proposed.
Which is, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Wachamoto, it would be to direct staff to work with Mojave Valley LLC to come back with an amended agreement and bring it back at the next board meeting for board consideration.
Is that okay?
Yes. I amend my motion to what he said. And I'll second that.
Amend your motion to return to staff?
Yes.
For recommendation? Okay. All right, we have a motion?
And I second it.
And it's a second. Okay. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much. Onto item number 74. Supervisor Johnson, discussion, possible action, direct staff to submit an accounting?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't know if everybody got a chance to look at the information we have, but it doesn't meet the requirements of any kind of an audit that would pass scrutiny with anybody I can see. We have no, it shows no billings to, from the park itself, the park committee, to the county, showing that they paid for any improvements. The bills seem to go to a private outfit, which is controlled by Mr. Ozimi, and somebody else. It doesn't show that Mojave Valley Park paid for these improvements. I think we still need to continue it until they're able to furnish us with receipts that have been paid for, and show that the $250,000 we are reimbursing to the park for actual improvements that the park paid for.
And your action?
I would just continue until the next meeting, or whenever they can get this, that information, and also, they would get us, part of the reason we gave the $250,000 was that the Legacy Foundation was going to contribute $250,000, and some unknown person was going to continue, contribute $250,000. And we asked for verification of the anonymous donor, and we haven't received that yet either. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
I believe anonymous, I believe anonymous means...
Supervisor Wachamoto?
Oh, sorry.
I believe anonymous means anonymous. I believe they found, they have a paper trail of where the money came from. I mean, if somebody wanted to let you know they were donating money, that's fine. Other people donate things, and they don't want it put out to the world, and as long as there's a paper trail for this, I think that should be sufficient.
Chairman Watson? You know, I've been listening to this for a couple of months now, and if there's some accusations that are to be made, then make them. Every meeting, we're coming back with this, and I'd like Mr. Ozami to come up and address this. You know, Legacy Foundation is one of the most honorable and biggest philanthropic organization we have, and I'm sure they're doing everything by the letter of the law, and if I were them, I'd be getting a little upset right now. So, if we can just get this once and for all off the table, and get Supervisor Johnson what he wants, I think it would be best to move on.
Mr. Chairman?
And, Mr. Chairman, I have never questioned that the Legacy Foundation did not give their money. That is not any part of my questioning. I've seen the newspaper articles and everything there, and I'm not asking for who the anonymous donor was, but just to show that, yes, there was $250,000 deposited into the park thing from an anonymous person, to show that it was there, because that was part of the reason that the board gave the okay for giving the $250,000.
Thank you, Supervisor Johnson. I think this can be resolved fairly simply and very quickly. We have about an $8 million park. Mojave County gave you $250,000 authorization. If you'll just show us $250,000 worth of those items, we could satisfy Supervisor Johnson.
And, Mr. Chairman, in accordance with the agreement, and I don't mean to cut off Mr. Ailer and Mr. Ozami, but in accordance with the agreement with Mojave Valley Park, what was required is that they would do the improvements, they would submit a claim for those improvements. Public Works, through our Parks Department, went out and inspected and verified those improvements that were complete, and then we issued payment. I think six claims were, we received six claims for payment, and we issued six checks, and they went to the LLC. That's my understanding. As per the agreement, so, at least for, from the board's perspective, in accordance with the agreement, and I believe in 100% compliance with the motion that was made to donate the $250,000, staff was in full compliance with our responsibility towards the verification and of the improvements and the payment of the monies that the board approved.
Thank you, Mr. Hendrix. Mr. Ailer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, Dan Ailer, on behalf of the Legacy Foundation. I believe it was about a week, maybe 10 days ago, I submitted a copy of the anonymous donors cashier's check for, in the amount of $250,000, showed the account that it went into, which was the Mojave Valley Park, the day that it was, the day that it was deposited and cashed. Again, the, one of the multiple foundation grants was dependent upon that $250,000 contribution. And once we were advised and had data that showed that it was made, we, at that point in time, delivered our companion $250,000, which is about 50% of what our total contributions were. And again, although Mr. Johnson indicated that he isn't questioning whether or not the foundation made their contributions, I can assure you that, if you request, we have every single canceled check, which I believe totaled, within a few cents, $495,000 for this project. And certainly, we can deliver those, each one of those canceled checks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ailer.
I'd like to say one more thing. I want to thank Mr. Ailer, Mr. Ozami, Mr. Sherrill. This project has been talked about for decades, other boards, previous supervisors, and this deal that was put together is a model, hopefully, for future public-private projects, and they've worked so hard, the whole community. And I just want to, I can't say it enough, I want to thank you, thank you for all the hard work, from your wallet to your sweat. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, to respond to Supervisor Johnson's comment about...
So if you just take those without even considering the 50,000 linear foot of two-inch irrigation, close to 4,000 linear foot of four-inch irrigation, about 1,600 linear foot of the six-inch irrigation that goes throughout the whole park, and you just put some numbers in front of it, I think you'll see that, you know, you exceed significantly more than $250,000. And again, I want saying that, you know, Director Lotosky, anytime that we requested for the draw, he was out there, he looked at it, he inspected it, and he approved that. So again, one other thing that, you know, we are all getting a little bit, you know, disappointed of some of the comments that we are hearing, we are a bunch of volunteers. We are not obligated to do any of this. We are a bunch of volunteers in this community trying to get done. But, you know, to obstruct, to, you know, for someone who is elected to serve, it is an issue, it is a problem. I am hoping that, you know, Supervisor Johnson would stop by and take a look at the park, would allow us to continue working and team up with us to enhance the park even further instead of finding a way to, or instructing the staff to find something from nothing. That's my point, is that, you know, we need to, we need to come together as a community, and I'm hoping that we would be able to do more project, as Supervisor Angus said. And we are doing that. We are not only in Mojave Valley Community Park. Right now, we are working at the Rotary Park in her district, you know, we are doing tennis courts, you know, pickup balls, and a whole bunch of other facilities. Every school in the community, in the Mojave Valley area, we have touched, we have taken care of. And, you know, I'll be more than happy to give you a tour of all these different facilities. So I hope that, you know, I know that is hard to understand for someone, but it is basically, that's what we are doing. And again, I repeat myself, we are a bunch of volunteers, we are not obligated to do it, but we love to do it. Thank you.
And thank you.
Chairman Watson.
You've accomplished a remarkable project on a huge swath of land and a number of children, young adults, youth down there on several weekends that I've been by. Must have been several, several, not thousand, but probably three or 400 at one time. It's remarkable. Supervisor Bishop.
Yes, Chairman Watson. I would like to make a motion that we accept the accounting from our finance director on this $250,000.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, but Supervisor Johnson had already made a motion to continue this item, so I do have a motion out there.
Okay, thank you, Jenny. Then what I'd like to point out is there is a memo from our finance director, Coral Lloyd, showing the detailed receipts of all of this, the monies, and how it was paid for the $250,000. I would think that that pretty much puts the issue to bed.
Okay, we have a motion, but do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Johnson.
Mr. Chairman. We're getting off course, everybody's acting like there's some alternative motive here. We have an obligation to taxpayers, $250,000, and we need legitimate receipts coming in. The receipts that have been shown go to, and I understand what Mr. Ozimi's saying, you know, his construction company was, you know, doing it for the Legacy Foundation, whatever goes there. Our agreement was with the park. And the park needs to show that, hey, we, you know, we did these, these improvements, these are the checks that we paid to have those improvement done, and the county is reimbursing them for these fees. These checks that Supervisor Bishop has mentioned here, these bills, do not say the park association. They do not have it. So I'm just saying, if they show that, great. If the board wants to go ahead and do it, fine, you can answer to the state IG on this. It's something that's basic accounting practices. We've had problems before with money, and all I'm asking for is a receipt. I'm not saying anybody has stolen any money, I'm not saying there's anything wrong. I just want a legitimate accounting for the money. And Mr. Hendrix, while he says we went out and approved what was done, that's not what I'm seeing from the emails, where our engineers went out and said, hey, the work was already completed, we don't know if it was done or not done. I mean, you could see, obviously, like Mr. Ozimi says, the sidewalks and those things, I don't know if we paid for those, but like the water and that, we didn't inspect those things. So if the county takes over this, we have no idea what's in the ground or anything. I just want it to be done in professional manner. We are a government agency, and that's the way it should be done. If the board decides to go another direction, that's fine, I've made my objections. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Johnson. Okay, we have a motion. It appears there's a lack of a second. Supervisor Bishop, would you like to further explain what your position is?
My position is the finance director has written a memo to all the board of supervisors accounting for, for the monies. And I believe that, that covered the $250,000. Maybe Ms. Lloyd can come forward and explain that memo.
Well, while she's coming, can I just ask, Mr. Espeland, does that meet the threshold to cover the liability of the county?
I don't understand the question. What do you mean the liability?
Well, what Supervisor Johnson's saying is that he just wants it to be, you know, exactly to the letter of the law, that it would meet some sort of attorney general or the state, a state audit. What we have been given, does it reach that threshold?
I don't know the answer to that, because it's an audit, it's an accounting question. I don't, I don't, I'm not an accountant. I don't, I don't understand, I don't know what would be, we meet the requirements of an, of an audit by the...
Then what would we be looking for? I mean, if we don't know, what, and Supervisor Johnson's saying that we're not getting it, what exactly is it that...
Well, from the legal standpoint, I'm looking at the agreement that was entered into in April of 2015, and I believe that we've met the terms of that by donating the $250,000 as outlined by Administrator Hendrix. That's just the legal standpoint. As for the audit, I can't answer that question. I don't know if our finance director is in a position to do that either, I don't know, but I just cannot answer the question of whether it meets a lot, an audit.
Good morning, Chairman, if I may. According to the agreement, it appears that the county certainly followed up with reviewing all of the invoices as well as going on site and looking at the work product. I believe that what Supervisor Johnson is referring to and asking is the confirmation that the bills were paid by the park that Mojave County paid for. So what we have is a copy of all of the receipts, what we do not have is the actual copy of their canceled check showing that they remitted payment to the vendors.
But, but we're, we've been given proof of paid receipt.
Yes.
In excess of $250,000.
Yes.
Thank you.
And Chairman Watson, if I may, but also, further proof that we have is we have a representative of the Legacy Foundation who has approved this. We also have Mr. Azani, Azani, who also has given his, given us his assurances as well. So we have additional assurances that these things have been done too. So in addition to the receipts that we have and the memo that our finance director has prepared, we also have assurances too. It may not meet the level that Supervisor Johnson is requesting, but there are other, there are other things out there as well to help with this.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for Ms. Lloyd.
Supervisor Johnson, you bet.
Thank you. Ms. Lloyd, you said we have the receipts. Do any of those receipts have paid for, check number, so-and-so on them?
No, so the receipts that we have do not have an evidence of them stamping that as paid, if you will. But we don't have the scope of authority to actually audit their books and receipts. So I believe that that was asked was, excuse me, if they were amenable to providing a copy of their receipts, and I don't know where that stands, other than what they've said today, that they would be happy to forward some of that information. But the scope of the contract, at times, so my experience has been that at times when you're entering into an agreement with a nonprofit for a number of reasons, and it is a group of volunteers, and often those agreements will include a statement that allows the county to require an audit be performed, that the other agency will pay for, or that the county will have an opportunity to go in and review their books. And neither of those was actually included in that agreement, so what was included in the agreement, I believe has been complied with, but in direct response that the receipts, as you can see by examining them, they do not include anything from any of the volunteers stamping those and noting the check number of what was paid on any of these items directly through the organization.
Correct, but are you saying, as our finance director, that, that a receipt would be given to us? I mean, I have my private business, and when I submitted a bill and you paid me, I put down paid. I mean, everybody that does work with any contractor gets a bill saying, yeah, you owe us this much money, and you go, okay, here it is, you sign it, and you say, yeah, paid in full, or whatever. I'm just saying, none of that was there, none of that was with the company. All I'm asking for is to show that it was reimbursed. And yes, they're a group of great volunteers, and they put something together, but they're dealing with millions of dollars. And I'm saying, and our $250,000, and I'm getting tired of discussing this, because obviously, we're not on the same page, but we have no receipts that say they've been paid. That's all, Mr. Chairman. I'm done arguing.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor Johnson. Any further questions for Ms. Lloyd?
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Lloyd.
Chairman Watson. All right. In lieu of the fact that we, we have a value of the park of $8 million, I think it's fair to say that our $250,000 did go into improvements in the park. If Mr. Mr. Sherrill or Azami or any of the gentleman want to provide us with this proof, I think that would be a nice addition to make, but at this point, I would like to make a motion that we accept the memo from our finance director with the review of her receipts and the expenditure for the Mojave, Fort Mojave Community Park as written.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? There being no further discussion, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you very much. Onto item number 75. Let's go ahead.
We have to go back to the public.
Go back to the public hearing? Okay. Okay. Before we get into the public hearings, do you want to take a 10-minute break?
If you'd like to.
It's approaching 11 o'clock, so let's take a 10-minute break. We'll come back and start item number 58 on public hearings. That's all, Mr. Chairman. I'm done arguing.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor Johnson. Any further questions for Ms. Lloyd?
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Lloyd.
Chairman Watson. All right. In lieu of the fact that we have a value of the park of $8 million, I think it's fair to say that our $250,000 did go into improvements in the park. If Mr. Cheryl, or Army, or any of the gentlemen want to provide us with this proof, I think that would be a nice addition to make, but at this point, I would like to make a motion that we accept the memo from our finance director with the review of her receipts and the expenditure for the Mojave, Fort Mojave Community Park, as written.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? There being no further discussion, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you very much. Onto item number 75. Let's go ahead.
We have to go back to the public.
Go back to the public hearing? Okay. Okay. Before we get into the public hearings, do you want to take a 10-minute break?
If you'd like to.
It's approaching 11 o'clock, so let's take a 10-minute break. We'll come back and start item number 58 on public hearings. Reconvene the meeting. Would like to move the agenda item to item number 79 for the discussion, possible action for the adoption of a resolution supporting the Toys for Tots program and encouraging citizen participation in the Toys for Tots program. Supervisor Jean Bishop has brought this item to us.
Yes, I'd like to read the resolution to the audience. This resolution of the Mojave County Board of Supervisors, supporting the Toys for Tots program and encouraging citizen participation in the Toys for Tots program. Whereas the Board of Supervisors met in regular session the sixth day of November 2017, and whereas the Marine Toys for Tots Foundation is an IRS-recognized 501(c)(3) tax-exempt not-for-profit public charity, and whereas the mission of the Toys for Tots program is to collect new unwrapped toys each year and distribute those toys as Christmas gifts to less fortunate children in the community in which the campaign is conducted, and whereas the Mojave County supports the objectives of the Toys for Tots program and playing an active role in the development of one of our nation's most valuable resources, our children. Now therefore, be it resolved that the county of Mojave does hereby support Toys for Tots program and encouraging citizen participation in the Toys for Tots program, passed, approved, and adopted the sixth day of November 2017. And Chairman Watson, I'd like for you to recognize Terry Flanagan, our local coordinator for this area, and his assistant Lisa Sullivan.
Good morning, and thank you.
Good morning, Supervisors. Let you know real briefly here, Mojave County has two Toys for Tots units. The first one, and the largest, is our area. We are called Mojave County North. I basically run the Kingman area. My counterpart here, Lisa Sullivan, a retired Marine Gunnery Sergeant, runs the River area. We cover all the way from Topoc to Bullhead to Golden Valley to the rest of the county, not to leave out my fellow Marines in Havasu. The Havasu Marine Corps League there runs the Havasu area. Last year, in Mojave County, the Toys for Tots program, both areas combined, did between 3,000 to 4,000 children in this county, and all through donations of toys and funds. And we thank you very much, Supervisor Bishop, for this motion, and fellow supervisors.
Hoorah, Marines!
Hoorah!
Chairman Watson, I make a motion that we approve and accept Resolution Number 2017-150 for Toys for Tots.
We have a motion?
Second, Beth.
And a second. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, Terry and Lisa.
I believe that would be number 58, is that correct? Thank you. Item number 58 is a public hearing for the adoption, Resolution Number 2017-137, to deny the request to name a portion of the road in sections 2, 3, and 4, Township 40 North, Range 6, from Yellowstone Road to LaVoy-Finnicum Road, located in the Canebeds vicinity, east of State Highway 389, south of Canebeds, and the north Mojave County area. We have a number of people signed up to speak to this item. And we'll start with David Finnicum.
Well, my name's David Finnicum, and I live at Jake's Gate, Canebeds, Arizona. I was born and raised in Canebeds, and we've got a lot of relatives there. And we would like very much to have that road changed to LaVoy-Finnicum Road, about two and a half miles of that Yellowstone Road, which they stretched a long ways to get it down there, because that road was the Pipe Valley Road for 70, 80 years before they extended the name of the Yellowstone Road on down. But anyway, well, I'm suffering from stage fright up here quite a bit. I've never been in.
Oh, don't worry about it.
In a place like this.
Everybody does.
I was quite impressed, because your opening of your meeting there, that was good. But anyway, the Canebeds Road there, I donated about two miles out to the center line to the county for that road. And this road we like, LaVoy-Finnicum Road, I've never had my land surveyed, but I'm pretty sure that it goes out to the center line of that, for about a mile of that. So I probably own part of that, which eventually will be donated to the county. But I'd just like to urge everybody to do that. It's one of, it's history to us. It's like, you know, Beale Street, or Andy Devine here. The counties came up there and changed a lot of the name of those roads that were there for a long, long time. This is such a small matter, after listening to some of these large things here, that makes me wonder. But anyway, I'd appreciate a yes vote on that. And like I say, we're old-time residents there. I've lived there all my life. My father lived there, and also, he was a county blade man up there for many, many years. He worked for the Mojave County on this strip as a blade man there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Finnicum.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisors, my name is LaVoy Adair. I am the Secretary for the Community Committee for the road name change.
We need your address, sir.
Thank you very much. I'm at 2870 South Spur Ranch Road, Canebeds, Arizona. Before the zoning planning and zoning committee, we were denied that request. One of the reasons was the mayor of Colorado City had some objections. I have talked to him. I've since given you a copy of a letter from him indicating that he was not opposed to that road name change at all. It was only a matter of they being on the grid system, and there are a total of seven roads in Canebeds that have name signs on them. He said that wouldn't be a problem at all if we wanted to change Yellowstone to LaVoy-Finnicum Road. That wasn't going to be a problem for the emergency services or the fire department. Eighty-nine percent of the landowners who would be affected by this road name change are in favor. That's 15, 4, 1 against, and 1 wanted both names on that road name change, which would be Yellowstone-Lavoy-Finnicum Road. That was too many names, too many letters for that sign. They would have no objection to that being LaVoy-Finnicum Road either. If you look at picture number 1, which is your third page down, it shows where Yellowstone Road intersects Highway 389. Clearly, that shows across that road that that road dead ends, Yellowstone Road dead ends where it meets the highway. That road does not continue. If you look up the definition of a linear or an alignment, it says a linear or orderly arrangement, the arrangement of something in a straight line, orderly position in relation to something else. Having served in the military, I know when I was told by a sergeant to line up, that I was in a line. You weren't wavy or curvy, but you were in a straight line. If I was to take some type of flammable material and string it out, like powder, in a straight line, or in a curvy line and light that, it would burn from one end to the other, because it would be connected. It would be in an alignment. If you look at the next page, you will see picture number 2 indicates that on the south end of that highway, that also comes into a dead end. The next picture up shows that there are two football fields distance on picture number 3, where that road dead ends, and where the other road on the other side of the highway takes off. That is not a linear alignment by any sense of the stretch of the imagination. One road dead ends, another road begins. The other problem they had was, the next page down, David Finnicum owns the gate in this picture. For some reason, they said .07 miles east of Yellowstone Road, there was another road named Finnicum Drive. That is not possible. I don't know where that come from. That was David Finnicum's gate. It is actually called Jake's Gate by the community, because Jake Farron owned the property. He had a cabin there at one time. We don't know where Finnicum Drive come from. To me, that portion of a section does not apply to us either. And Dale Finnicum was the blade man in our part of the country for over 20 years. His son, Tommy Finnicum, ran the blade after that. David Finnicum here today, who was represented, worked for Coconino County and Mojave County for over 30 years. We would like to honor the Finnicum family by naming that portion almost three miles of road, LaVoy-Finnicum Road. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Kathleen Michler, 5485 North Laguna Road. I watched the planning and zoning on this, where they made the decision, and I was shocked. Putting it simply, we have a bridge across the dam that's named after a man that gave his life for this country to defend the Constitution. LaVoy-Finnicum did no less. He gave his life defending the Constitution. I don't understand why this is even a question. I don't understand why this is even a question. Thank you.
Thank you. Dwayne Black.
Dwayne Black at 2650 Spur Ranch Road in Canebeds, Arizona. And I was also at the zoning and planning meeting that, that took place last month. And at that meeting, as has already been pointed out by Mr. Adair, they, the denial, they implied very strongly that that denial was, was based on, on the, of the letter that was sent by the Colorado City Mayor to, to some of those folks there. And the denial was supported for that reason. And then they brought up these other ordinances as, again, Mr. Adair has, has spoke with you about that, that would, would bring some opposition to, to this road name change. And so, there, there should be no, no reason for, for their denial from the planning and zoning folks. As this lady has said prior to me, there, there's, there's no reason for that. They, we have, we have names of roads, city-states throughout, throughout our country for the last 200 years honoring, honoring people. And those, those that have, have stood up for, for their rights and those that, that we honor, there's, there's, there's always been concern for, for who, whose side, you know, whose side you're on, whether you're for or against them. And it's, it's about honoring those that, that have, have done great work for us. It's, it's interesting to note, as has been mentioned by Mr. Finnicum, that, that Canebeds Road was, was known for a long time as Sands Road. And for some reason, someone came in and renamed it Sands Road. And that's everything east of, of the Highway 3, 389. And if you, if you, it's been known, everything west of Highway 389 is known as Clay Hole Road. And for, you know, there, there's a change, the roads have been changed and, and this doesn't seem to, to make sense for, for the locals and those there as, as to the name of those roads. And so, I, I'm in favor of, of the Board of Supervisors approving the name change and would, would strongly ask that you, you accept this change and, and allow us in, in Canebeds to, to honor this, this request. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Black. I do know there's been a number of requests for the improvement of Yellowstone Road. And it's my understanding that, that the county does not have enough right-of-way for that area. So, I'm sure we may become knocking on your door at some point in time. Jennifer Jones Esposito, please.
Jennifer Jones Esposito, address previously stated. Robert Lavoy-Finnicum was a Mojave County resident, an Arizona rancher, an American patriot. He was murdered in cold blood by corrupt federal officials. He was willing to take a stand for things that most people will never have the courage to do. I was not able to attend his memorial in Utah. My husband did. I attended his memorial here in Kingman with my good friend Jordan Page, who wrote the Ballad of Lavoy-Finnicum. If you've never listened to it, please go to YouTube and play it. My biggest regret is that I never got to meet Lavoy. I had planned on it. We have a lot of friends in common. But he went to Oregon before I had a chance to arrange that meeting. They say it matters how you stand. And I would say I agree with that 100%. We should never forget what happened to Lavoy. I would erect a monument in his honor if I could afford to do it personally. But changing the name of this one road is absolutely the very, very least we can do to honor his memory. What happened to him should never, ever happen to an American, to an Arizonan, to a Mojave County resident. He went in support of other ranchers, not just the Bundys who were acquitted of what happened in Oregon, but in support of the Hammonds. And if you don't know about the Hammonds, you should look that up as well. Ranching is one of the five Cs, cattle is one of the five Cs of the Arizona economy. We have to take a stand for our ranchers and for their rights in the increasing encroachment and abuse of the Federal Bureau of Land Management and other federal alphabet agencies. And I urge you to do the right thing today and to change the name of this road. Victory over oppression. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that completes the number of people that have signed up to speak to item number 58. At this point, I'll close the public hearing and open for discussion or possible action.
Chairman Watson, I make a motion that we approve the request to rename a portion of the road in Sections 2 and 3 Township 40-North, Range 6 West, in Sections 22, 23, 26, 27, 34, and 35 Township 41-North, Range 6 West from Yellowstone Road to Lavoy-Finnicum Road, located in the Canebeds vicinity, east of State Highway 39, south of Canebeds Road in Mojave County, Arizona. And I am proud to do so.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second? Supervisor Wakamoto?
Yes.
Is that correct? Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
We have motion carried. Three to two. Thank you. I'd appreciate it if we could keep our comments. Thank you. Item number 59, open the public hearing for the discussion, possible action for the amendment to Mojave County General Plan from rural development area land use to suburban development area. We have two people signed up to speak to this item. Arlo Cox.
Thank you. It's Arlo Cox. I live at 7521 North Skyview. I live and own property in the same section as this request, changing it from the rural addressing or rural development that we have to a suburban development. I, I see it as spot zoning. Everything there, majority of it, I think there's only about 10 or 15% that is even five acre. The rest of it is larger parcels. Everybody that does live there that I've talked to is in favor of keeping it into the five acre because they're wanting larger parcels, places to keep horses, so on and so forth. I would just like you to take a look at that, to try to keep it within the general plan rather than do a spot zoning for one person. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak to item number 59? I'll close the public hearing. And Chair would entertain a motion.
Chairman Watson, I move that we approve item 59.
We have a motion for approval. If, for a second.
I think Buster just seconded.
Supervisor Johnson.
Yeah, is somebody else seconded?
Uh, no, not yet.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carried. Open the public hearing for item number 60. And that's for the possible action of the adoption of the Board of Supervisors Resolution 2017-139 for the rezone of the parcel number 120-22061 from agricultural residential eight acre minimum to agricultural residential five acre minimum lot size. We have Mr. Cox, would you like to speak to this item?
It's the same objection as I had before. Is that they're bringing it down. They've taken what we thought was going to be five acre parcels into 1.45 acre parcels when most of it there, it'll be the smallest thing there. There's no roads. There's probably no water there. There's got a number of dry wells right there. I just don't see that there's infrastructure to support one acre lot size. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cox.
Could we have Tim Walsh come and talk about this, please?
Chairman Watson, Supervisor Wakamoto, I would like to clarify one thing. There was a, an error and it's an oversight on, on my part in missing it in, in proof in this. But on the board agenda, it states just the five acre minimum, but actually in the board action form, it states both five acre and one acre minimum. All the notices that went out included both the five acre minimum and the one acre minimum.
And the one acres?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And I'd be happy to answer any, any questions that anyone has on this item.
Supervisor Wakamoto?
Yes, could you explain, the gentleman has said something about spot zoning. So, can you explain what is happening here that makes this not spot zoning?
Yes, and I'll actually ask if Chris can come help me with that as well.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Supervisor Wakamoto. In Arizona, there appears to be two tests for spot zoning. One is spot zoning in the traditional sense that planners are taught in school what that means. That means an isolated parcel is zoned, a zone that's not found anywhere else in the area. But Arizona adds a second test as whether or not it's compliant with the general plan. And in this case, the board just amended the general plan to be suburban development area. So, I have to tell you that it, this one, it, it, it does now comply with the general plan and therefore that test has been met. And that's the reason we would not consider this a spot zone.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Close, anyone else, anyone else wishing to speak to item number 60? There being none, we'll close the public hearing.
Chairman Watson, I move that we approve item 60.
We have a motion? I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Open the public hearing for item number 61. This is for the adoption of assessive parcel 120-23-007 from agricultural residential 36 acre to agricultural residential 10 acre minimum lot size to allow for a minor, for a minor land division in the Lake Havasu City vicinity. Commission recommended approval by unanimous vote. I have no one here signed up for item 61. Anyone wishing to speak to item 61? There being none, I'll close the public hearing for item 61.
Chairman Watson, motion to approve.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second for approval? Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Motion carried. Onto 62, open the public hearing for the discussion, possible action for the adoption of Board Resolution Number 2017-141 denying a request for a rezone for assessive parcel number 225-27-206 from an agricultural residential zone to a single-family residential manufactured home prohibited zone to allow for a minor land division in the south Mojave Valley vicinity, west of Kelly Dell Media and south to Willow Drive in Mojave County. Commission recommended denial by a vote of five to one. Commissioner Abbott voted against the motion. I have several people signed up to speak. June Thornton.
Hi, my name is June Thornton and I live 1725 Ironwood Drive, across the street from the said properties here. My husband and I built our house across the street in 1992. We didn't know until about six months afterward that the two houses are on over one acre. We've had to deal with renters coming and going over the years. I met and became good friends with the previous owners and the signs who owned the houses for over 20 years. They hired me as their landlord so I can pick and choose the neighbors. It kind of helped, but then over some years, it didn't help. As the owners got older and sick, they couldn't upkeep the houses. So, there are years where the houses were just left vacant. I kept up the, the two houses while they were vacant and then once in a while, because their children became, you know, they took over the houses, they had renters. What you call, okay. We've had renters that didn't want to be neighborly or cared for the houses, so, you know, they did deteriorate. Also, we had some law enforcements that would show up on some of these renters on a more average basis than some of the owners that are on that street. My husband and I are, are more impacted than most of the other neighbors because we live across the street, so we have to deal what goes on with these renters. I, I don't, I don't have anything against renters, but if you, if you own your home, you take pride in your home. Debbie bought the houses in 2014 as is and since renovated the two houses for living and for sale. I don't have any issues as the two houses have been grandfathered and are sellable or, you know, split it as is. Since the improvements on both houses, they have improved the value to the street and the neighborhood, the way they look and also, you know, as, as a neighborhood. So, that's, that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Deborah Lasher.
Good, good, I guess it's still morning, Mr. Chairman and board members. Special thanks to my neighbor who just days ago lost her husband and was kind enough to come and speak on my behalf this morning. It's greatly appreciated. She's a wonderful lady and a great neighbor. I purchased these two properties
Can we have your name and address?
Sorry. My name's Deborah Lasher. I live at 1724 and a half Ironwood Drive, Mojave Valley.
Thank you.
I purchased a grandfathered property back in 214 on one acre with two residences, primarily because I was going to live in one and seller financed the one next door to my son. I don't want to be a landlord and don't want to rent, rent the property next door. Subsequently, my son got a job transfer and I do not need two houses now. So, I guess it's become an issue with some of my neighbors now that I want to sell one of them. And the homes have been there for 50 years and I'm here to defend my grandfather rights because grandfather rights were initiated to protect the homeowner's rights of property owners against future oppositions of the grand owners against future oppositions of the grandfathership. And they were grandfathered when I purchased them. So, according to Arizona statute, I do have the legal right to divide them and sell them separately. My issue is that I can't get them financed if they're not in zoning compliance, which only impacts and hurts myself. Again, because the properties have been there for so long on one acre, and most of the neighbors didn't even realize, because they're evenly situated on the road, and they're two primary residences. I was turned down by the planning, at the planning meeting, because there are some errors here, excuse me, in some of the things that were reported. It says that my site is not served by water or sewer. I do pay two water bills to Epcor, and I do have two permitted and approved septic systems, ones for each house. The homes are both on the main road, as I said earlier, evenly situated, conforming with the neighborhood, and they both have Main Street access. Basically, like I said, right now, I feel like I'm not negatively impacting the neighborhood. I did not buy a vacant piece of land and ask to build two houses on them, and they have been there for so long that I feel like anyone that came, the opposing parties came several years after these two homes were in existence. So again, I'm here to defend my grandfathership, and I would like to be able to have the ability to finance my properties in the event that I do want to sell one. I can sell them, but it makes it really hard if they won't finance.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This also is in my district, because Mr. Cox had called. Tim, could you speak on this property also, please?
Before we do that, can we have Vince Nelson, please?
Oh, sorry.
Mr. Nelson?
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Vince Nelson. I reside at 1820 Ironwood Drive, east Ironwood Drive, Mojave Valley, Arizona, and I am here to speak on the ability of the parcel we're talking about to be split legally and be sold separately. The water for the community stops at Cali Del Media, and so the majority of all the acre parcels in my area are all on wells and septic tanks. And under state guidelines, the splitting of anything below one acre creates havoc for planning and zoning, for setbacks, for sewers and, I mean, septic tanks and water supply. So, I would like to voice a no on this issue, and make it understood that if we allow one to do this, then we've opened the floodgate, and presently, there's only about half of the lots that have houses built on them, and I could see a large influx of being split. And it uses the word minor split. And so, does that mean you can go four times, two times? The guidelines aren't there, and if we have a higher density with septic tanks and wells on smaller lots, it's going to have a public health concern of some sort because of the improper setbacks and distance between wells and septic tanks. So I'm voicing my concern and saying, no, I don't want to see this property split. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Okay, before we go on, is there anyone else wishing to speak to item 62 in the public hearing? Okay. If not, I'll close the public hearing. Now Supervisor Wakamoto?
Sorry. Tim?
Chairman Watson, Supervisor Wakamoto, sorry. Planning and zoning, first staff recommended denial of this parcel based on the fact that the, there are no other RO zones in this area. In this area, everything is basically acre minimum, it's AR, one acre minimum. This would introduce the RO zone and introduce a half acre, excuse me, half acre lot size to this area. So based on those criteria, staff recommended denial. At the Planning and Zoning Commission, they agreed with those recommendations and recommended denial as well. I think it was, I believe it was a 5-1 vote with Commissioner Abbott opposing, so. And I understand, listening to the lady, it sounds like there is a, there's an issue in our documents that there is water provided to the site by Epcor, so that's an error on our part that will get changed. But as was mentioned, they're served by septic systems there. ADQ's requirements now for a new construction requires an acre minimum for a septic system, so this would create a smaller size for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question of Mr. Walsh.
Yes.
Isn't this also a spot zoning on this one? We talked about that in the last one, but isn't this a spot zoning?
This, yeah, this would be the true definition of spot zoning, in that everything around it is AR, and this would be the RO right in the middle of it.
Does that answer your question, Supervisor Johnson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Supervisor Wakamoto, this is your area.
I move that we deny the zoning.
Second it.
We have a motion and a second for the denial. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number 63, open the public hearing. Discussion, possible action for the adoption of Board Resolution 2017-142 in the South Mojave Valley Area Plan for residential recreation land use designation to a general commercial land use designation for assessors, number parcel 224-30-048, to allow for a commercial development in the South Mojave Valley vicinity. I have no one wishing to speak to that item?
Chairman Watson, I'll make a motion.
I'll close the public hearing.
Chairman Watson, I'll make a motion to approve item 63 for the amendment to the South Mojave Valley Area Plan.
We have a motion for approval.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. On to item number 64, open the public hearing for possible action for the adoption of a rezone for assessive parcel number 224-30-048, residential recreation zone to a highway commercial zone, to allow for commercial development in South Mojave Valley vicinity. I have no one signed up to speak to item number 64. So I will close the public hearing for item number 64.
Chairman Watson, I'll make a motion to approve item number 64 for the rezone.
We have a motion for the approval.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. On to item 65, open the public hearing for the discussion, possible action for the adoption of Resolution Number 2017-144, amendment to the Mojave County General Plan for a neighborhood commercial land use designation to light industrial land use designation for assessors, parcel number 208-04-043 in the Yucca vicinity. Mojave County General Area, Commission recommended approval by unanimous vote. I have no one signed up to speak to item number 65.
Chairman Watson, I'll move to-
I'll close the public hearing for item number 65.
I'll move to approve item number 65, amendment to the Mojave County General Plan, Resolution Number 2017-144.
Motion for approval.
Second.
And a second. Further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Item number 66, open the public hearing for the discussion, possible action for the adoption of Board of Supervisors Resolution Number 2017-145, special use permit for assessive parcel number 208-04-043, to allow for a towing and storage yard in a general zone in the Yucca vicinity. This is east of Interstate 40, south of the Proving Ground Road. Commission recommended approval by unanimous vote. I have no one signed up to speak to item 66, so I'll close the public hearing.
Chairman Watson, I'll make a motion to approve item 66 for the special use permit on parcel number 208-04-043.
Motion for approval on item 66.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Item number 67, open the public hearing. Discussion, possible action for the repeal or amendment from Mojave County Ordinance 2017-03, adopted at the August 7, 2017 board meeting, which added new fees and increased fees for planning and zoning and subdivision entitlements, and changes for the structure, for automation fees, and refer back to Developmental Services Department for review, presentation to Planning and Zoning Commission, the Building Code Advisory Board, and to conduct public outreach with constituents that these fees will impact. I have a number of people signed up for item number 67. That first person would be LeAnn Hogland-Smith.
Good morning again, LeAnn Hogland-Smith, 3981 South Centennial Road, Golden Valley. Speaking of this, words have impact and should be carefully used, especially when we're advocating increase in fees. At the first hearing a couple months ago, it was stated that fees were comparable to other counties and cities. The word comparable means similar, equitable, or close. And usually in business, we talk about 10% being comparable. For example, in Copo-Nicho County, the rezone to residential is $576 by their posted fees on site. The proposed fee in Mojave County is $2,200. That's 300 to 400% increase over the existing fee, and 400% higher than the other county. In the last 10 years, according to the U.S. Census Bureau, the overall population of Mojave County has increased approximately 17%, with the growth coming from Kingman at 8% and the rest coming from the rural areas. Lake Havasu's population has declined by 3.1%, and Bull's Head City's population has remained basically the same. If we want to continue the growth in the rural areas of this county, then these proposed fees will not achieve that desired result. Of course, if the plan is to restrict the growth of the rural areas and steer development toward the cities, then the board will have achieved that desired result. Coming from a county in northwest Indiana, I'm quite familiar with zoning and how it steers zoning towards the cities at the expense of the rural areas. That's really not ethical. And what I would do is encourage this board to reconsider these fees, make them truly comparable to other counties. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jennifer Jones Esposito.
Jennifer Jones Esposito, address previously stated. I'm very pleased to see this item back on the agenda. I don't know specifically why, but it's my understanding that it wasn't done right the first time, or there was some mistake. Those kind of mistakes are unacceptable to begin with. But again, this goes back to what I said at Call to the Public about a bad business plan for government. You know, I was, I was at the marathon meeting when this was passed, which should have never been put on that meeting, and that's another issue that I won't address at the moment. But the justification was, we want to expand our ability to serve the customers and get their permits in a faster turnaround time. The problem is, is we're not growing. We're really not growing enough to say, let's hire more government employees and pay their pensions and their retirement benefits, oh, and let's probably give them a car, too, while we're at it, and expand and grow government in the hopes that we can increase fees and bring in the revenue to cover it. If you have such a high demand to pull permits and grow in Mojave County, then you can certainly bring, you know, these fees and things back again before the board and reconsider them at the time when you actually have a need to justify wasting the people's money like you're wasting it under this current presentation. This does not encourage growth if, you know, I mean, I can run circles around your zoning ordinances, to be honest with you. I've got a long history of doing that sort of thing. I can find a loophole in any of it, but why would I, as a property owner in Mojave County, want to pull a permit? I mean, this poor guy that was sitting behind me, you know, you own the land, but you have to ask government permission to park your vehicle on it, to live on your, you have to pay permission for an occupancy fee to live on land that you bought. You know what that means? It means, these people out here don't own their land, I don't own my land, it means you own the land. Well, I don't really like that proposition. You know, we need to keep fees low, we need to keep permits low, we need to encourage people to develop their properties, and in the end, that means you will receive more property tax revenue and more revenue from which you can, in theory, hire additional people when you need them. But whoever screwed this up, not only that, whoever even proposed this, like I said, would never make it in a corporation where I sat on the board. I'd be calling Human Resources taking resumes. Unacceptable, absolutely unacceptable. We need to undo this mess and make Mojave County a friendly place to build and to grow, and that, my friends, is how you generate revenue. Thank you.
I don't want to add very much to what this lady said, other than, my name is Richard Grant, 718 North Alamo Avenue, Beaver Dam, Arizona. We have the same situation up there. Economic development is what we need.
Sure.
To increase anything. And the way to do that isn't increasing our fees, it's to bring the people in. And I appreciate all the work that you guys do. I'd hate to sit up there and do this every day, so I thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mike Fortino?
Mike Fortino, address previously stated. I agree with these two ladies right here. I moved here from the Gulf Shores, Alabama. I'm a native of New Orleans. I'm a southern boy. One thing that I, we grew up, and hear in politics a lot, is price gouging. In our oil, you know, gas stations, convenience stores, a bag of ice, there's always been a representative to protect us against price gouging. I consider these permits, that was $75 a month ago, to almost $500 this month, price gouging. I would just like to see it rectified. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.[600.14][600.14](applause) Samuel Flinner.
Yeah, my name is Samuel Flinner. I live at 11961 Rutz Drive in Yucca. Basically, I'm here to talk about motorhomes on your own property, as these others did. When I first got here, I came down from Washington State to get away from people in Olympia staying awake all night to figure out how to tax it. And I finally found out that if we don't, in Arizona, kind of regulate these restrictions, we're going to be in the same problem. I've owned property out there for four years. When I went out there to start with, I wasn't supposed to pull my motorhome on my property without a septic. Well, I had to go to my neighbor's in Park because he had a septic. So, I went ahead and I done everything legal. I put the septic in, put the electric in, put the phone in, and all that. My question is, I really don't believe that I should be taxed on a motorhome that is parked there, that is licensed, that is on property that's being taxed. But I guess my main question is to you, Commissioner, is if this raises, there's a lot of property out there that's for sale, that's going to detour a lot of people. And one of the main reasons it's going to detour them is Boyer and Remine Road. Now, what I'd like to know is, where is this money going to that you're taxing these people with motorhomes? It surely is not going out to Boyer and Remine Road, because I had to tow my motorhome in there with my pickup. So, maybe you can enlighten me on where this money is going to go.
The money that you pay into, with your fees, as my understanding goes into the general fund. The general fund is used for many purposes, such as the sheriff's office, the courts, recording, assessing, a number of things. As far as roads are concerned, the only dollars spent on roads come from the HRF dollars, and those are dollars that are arrived from taxes on the purchase of fuel. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Cheryl Flinner.
Cheryl Flinner, 11961 Rutz Road, Yucca, Arizona. That was my husband before, and like he said, we bought here four years ago when my father died. I decided that we needed to get a piece of property to park our motorhome on. And as we was driving from Parker up this way, I seen the ad, and we came out here and looked at it. Well, we was in a hurry to get back home to Washington, save time as well. So, we didn't find out many things, but we liked the property and we thought it was going to be a good area. But then when we came back down, two winters later, we found out a lot of different things, and found out we couldn't even park on the property. It was like, what's up with that? So, we're not happy with these fees for sure, because when we paid our, for our permit the first time, it was $175, and they told us next time it would be $75. But when I went back in last month, they said, no, it was going to be $400. And then other people are saying other prices. It's confusing. Everybody's getting different pricing, everybody's getting different things told to them, and it's really confusing. I don't know much about government, and I, you know, I just didn't learn a lot of that. I was a housewife and raised children. But I'm trying to learn. I don't like the idea that I have to pay for a permit to put my motorhome on my property when that's the reason I bought the darn property, was to park on it and not have to stay in an RV park, or not have to park out on public lands where I didn't have any facilities. Because I had intended on putting in a septic and putting in water and such, where you don't have that on public lands out there, where you park for two weeks at a time. You don't have all that. So, I wanted a place where I could have that and not be bothered by other people as well. And then here come these fees, here come these permits. So, we abided by that, though. We bought our permit. We bought permit to put in a building for the electric to be hooked up to. We put in the septic tank. We did all that. And then we came back this winter to find out that the fees have been jumped up so dramatically. What are we going to do? You know, we don't normally go to these kind of things and deal with this, but this time we decided we had better come and have a little say, in hopes that it will help some of the other people as well, and some of the ones that aren't here yet. Because there's a lot of us winter people coming down here that aren't here yet and don't know what's going on. So, you know, and we didn't even know about it, except for our neighbor called me and told me about it, and suggested that we get busy and get in on this. So, I guess that's telling me that I'm done with.
Yes, ma'am.[997.86][997.86](laughing)
Been wondering about that. Now I know. Okay. Well, I thank you for listening to me, and I hope you all understand what's going on, and you need help with dealing with this.
Thank you, ma'am.[1011.36][1011.36](applause) Next, we have Linda Lynn and Lou Custer.
Honorable Supervisors, Mr. Chairman, and Mr. Administrator, I'm speaking for my wife, Linda Lyon. She has an asthma problem. Anyhow, right now, we are temporarily ensconced at a trailer park on 93. The address is 3532 Iowa Freya Drive. We're from Montana. We're one of the many snowbirds that come down to this country every year, lots of Canadians. We spend money. We spend money. We buy gas. We pay for the roads we're doing, and now we want to live here. My wife and I are both social security recipients. We saved our money. We bought a piece of property, and all I see are permit fees and permit fees, and they're piling up. Then I get hit with this $480 for a permit to park my licensed fifth-wheel trailer on the property we have excavated already for it. Now, I can understand not having a septic tank or water. Those are really necessary. I believe in that, because I've seen too much junk, like in Dolan Springs. And we looked there, and chloride also, before we settled on the Sohigh Ranch, which we think is a wonderful place. Good view, nice piece of property. But folks, we're running out of money. I don't know what else to tell you, except people before me that have spoken very ably about this sudden increase. Please consider the old timers, the vets, those of us that are on fixed incomes. You can't keep jacking stuff up on us like that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.[1131.69][1131.69](applause) Okay, there are no one else, no one else signed to speak? So, I'll close the public hearing on item number 67.
All right.
Pardon me?
Yeah, we signed papers at the beginning and handed them in.
And your name, sir?
Vern Fisher.
Okay, yes, I do have it. I'm sorry. It was stuck underneath another one.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else that I haven't named yet?
We came a little late. You'd like to speak also.
Did you sign up prior to the meeting?
No.
Okay. Mr. Fisher.
Thank you very much. My name is Vern Fisher. I live at 710 North Nogales Avenue in Beaver Dam. It was a three-hour drive to drive down today, and so I appreciate the opportunity to be here. I, too, am like a lot of the folks here, senior citizen. I spend seven months of my year here in Beaver Dam in an RV. I have an RV that I travel with and park, and then I bought, two years, three years ago, I bought a park model that has been attached, evidently attached, to the land that I keep getting a property tax notice on and pay. This year, we've been notified that our fee for occupancy has gone up from $75 to the $400, and we under, I personally don't understand what it is, because as a private property owner, I'm said, I'm told that that, I'm being assessed that, yet other private properties, being Beaver Dam Golf Course private properties, those occupants are not being charged that fee. And the people in the RV parks are not being charged an occupancy fee. And when I asked the enforcement officer where, where they're, why they're not, I'm told that the park owner pays those fees for those occupants. And I said, in addition to his property tax? And she says, no, through his property tax. I pay property tax. My property tax, when I started in 2012, when I bought my land, was 9346. I did all my improvements in it, on the property. It went up in 2015 to $126. 2016, it went to $138, plus $50 for the park model trailer sitting there year-round. Then in 2017, it went from $138 to $328, which is 150% markup, plus the park model went from 48 to 66. I, too, as I'm trying to explain, I'm on a disability. I'm on fixed income. I'm down to the point in my life where I don't have a heck of a lot of resources. And these continued fees, when I own my own property, bought it, did all the permitting, paid all the fees for permitting, and now I continue to be hit with an occupancy to occupy my tiny house, the place I'm going to spend the last years of my life because of medical costs that have forced us to downsize. The dollars and cents don't add up for us. I appreciate your time and your consideration as you're sitting here, but as a, it seems to me that the fee is arbitrary, for lack of a better term, and it's discriminatory because not everybody's paying it the same that's in an RV, all the way across the board. So, thank you again for your consideration and appreciate your help in any way we can. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.[1381.88][1381.88](applause) And thank you for making that long drive. That's quite interesting, as you're going through Las Vegas these days.
It's a nightmare.[1393.65][1393.65](laughing)
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll close the public hearing for item number 67.
Chairman Watson, since it's a public hearing and they traveled all the way from Bullhead City, can at least one or two-
Sure, let's line them up. Bring them on down, each and every one. If you'll please make your comments brief, though.
Randy Flinner. I also reside at 11961 Rutz Road with my folks. I, too, am on disability from Washington, and as in line to receive the property from them when they die. With all the increases and everything, sharing two properties in two states, would not be able to do it. Can't see why anybody would do that, especially in my age bracket. Getting property in my state alone is pricey, as well as the taxes, and to have another state that wants people to come in, that a lot of people would love to come and live to, for medical reasons and otherwise, it isn't making sense with all these increases that you're trying to do. You're making people like me not want to come here simply because of what's happening in our own states. So, it doesn't make sense at all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.[1495.21][1495.21](applause)
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I really tried to get here. I'm a little one-armed today. Basically, I wanted to comment on the pet, oh, I'm sorry, Brenda Fury. I live on 5731 Iroquois Loop, and I just wanted to speak on the pets part of this in that I think there's so much regulation in pet ownership, and I understand there's been issues in this county over the last five or 10 years. However, not all of us are that way, and I just want to say that there's a lot of people out there who do take care of animals and do a very good job of it, and just to make this arbitrary $500 fee because they want to take care of one more animal or two more animals is really expensive, and I don't think it's going to help. We have so many laws right now, you guys just passed one in 2010, that says so much, why can't we just enforce what we have instead of arbitrarily jacking fees? As a homeowner, too, I'm going to ask you to please stop with these fees. My husband and I looked at property in Golden Valley, and we were going to put our toe behind on it to build, and we were told by our realtor that would not be allowed without all these expansive things to be done first. So, we couldn't live on the property and build as we were living there. So, we have chose not to buy anywhere else and just eventually sell what we have. Thank you.
Thank you very much.[1599.98][1599.98](applause)
Tracy Langley, 3965 North Penale Street, Chairman Watson, Supervisor staff. I wanted to speak about the kennel permit fee also. It's my understanding that it's going from free, $0, to 500. That is a huge increase, and I, any of these increases, I don't believe that they should be able to go up that amount. There should almost be a cap, the amount that a thing can increase like that. I understand we haven't increased these fees in a long time, and I understand Tim's department may need to hire some more people. He did say that the fees would be similar to what they are in other areas. I have looked into that. Of course, we only have a kennel fee because we have a dog limit. Not everywhere has an animal limit, so they don't have a kennel permit fee. So, a lot of areas don't have it at all. Penale County is $150. Maricopa is 328. So, 500 is still quite a bit more than that, and those areas have more money in some ways than we do. At least Maricopa does. They have more resources. So, such a dramatic fee will have negative effects. Some people may have to get rid of their animals, because these people already have licenses. We already know that they have this many dogs. Well, if we go to them and say, hey, you have to pay $500 now annually, they're going to have to make a decision whether to let their animal go, send it to the shelter, or keep it and pay the fee. A lot of people will not be able to afford that. So, I'd like to, I understand the need for a fee, because they do do work. They do process the paperwork, and it does take them time. But that amount is just too much. I think the fee should be a little bit more reasonable. That's all I ask. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.[1713.95][1713.95](applause)
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Katie Manning. I live at 3941 East Ames Avenue, Kingman. I'm in the county area, just outside of the city. I moved here a year ago after 70 years of living in California and being in construction for 33 years. Mojave County, Mojave County has had a smile for county, meaning that we're reasonable, we're fair, we're open-minded, we're friendly, we love to see new people coming in. I'm talking to you from a building industry point of view. A house down the street that was brand-new six months ago would have gone for $160,000. Now, with the new fees, that house is going to go for $184,000. And the builder and all the subsequent venues that are around that are having to pay increased fees, and I think the smile is starting to get a bit tarnished, and I think that will economically impact our county, and it will be adverse to what we're trying to achieve. We're increasing our population. We're increasing our population. We're trying to increase our revenues. Well, don't cut them off despite their noses, despite their faces, so let's hope the smile gets untarnished. Thank you for your time and good morning.
Good morning, and thank you. Close the public hearing.
Okay, Chairman Watson, first, I want to thank everybody who came and talked. It's been a couple of months since we talked about this, and when we first did, we talked about the need for some of the fees to go up. We haven't had fee raised for 10 years, totally in agreement. I think everyone did it in good faith, but I don't think it was done correctly. I said it then, and I say it now. So we've gone through a process to get it to where we are today. So with that in mind, I'm making the following motion, and my motion is to repeal Mojave County Ordinance 2017-03 and revert fee schedule to amounts prior to August 7th and rescind any new fees for planning, zoning, and subdivision entitlements and automation, and refer back to Development Services Department for review presentation to Planning and Zoning Building Code Advisory Board, and conduct public outreach with the constituents that these fees will impact. In addition, I'd like to bring back to the board a public participant, public participation plans for review and approval.
Okay, we have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion?
Chairman Watson?
Supervisor.
Under discussion. I just wanted to state that I have received a number of complaints, but the complaints that I received were on the kennel license and the RV fees. So I would like to revisit those fees, and I don't have a problem revisiting all the fees and making sure that we are in line with what we need as far as revenue and comparable to other cities and counties of our size, and I understood that that had already happened, but maybe we need to look at that a little bit closer. So I'm not sure, your motion was so long, I don't have a clue what you said.
Just to, I was just rescinding, I just was repeating basically the motion. So it's to rescind the ordinance, put the fees back to where they were before we voted yes, before the board voted yes on it, but to ask that Development Services bring the board a schedule of public participation plans, who they're going to go talk to, so that everyone who these fees impact has a say in it.
If you would amend your motion to what you just said, I could certainly support that rather than all the three or four paragraph.
I just, well, because they're, well, because 67 and 68 are a little different, so I needed to, what I understood is to do that to designate the difference.
So is your motion for 67 and 68?
No, they have to be separate. So this one was for the new fees for planning, zoning, subdivision entitlements, and automation, and the next one is for the building code. Do you want me to repeat it? Or I don't know how I can make it any shorter. So it's a motion to repeal, unless you just want me to say a motion to repeal Mojave County Ordinance 2017-03, because I want, I need to get into, we want to revert the fee schedule to what it was prior to August 7th, rescind any new fees for planning, zoning, and subdivision entitlements and automation, and refer this back to Development Services for review presentation to bring it back to Planning and Zoning Building Code Advisory Board and conduct public outreach with the constituents that these fees will impact. In addition, bring back to this board the public participation plans for review and approval. That was my motion. I didn't change any of it.
Right. Supervisor.
Maybe after Tim speaks.
If I may, Chairman Watson, Supervisor Angus, the planning and zoning fees would, the planning and zoning would go to Planning and Zoning Commission. The Building and Code Advisory Board wouldn't have oversight over the planning and zoning fees.
So you just need me to take out the Building Code Advisory Board part of it?
That's correct.
Okay, but okay with the rest of it?
We can, we can do that.
All right, so I need to amend my motion, and then amend section. So the motion is again to repeal Mojave County Ordinance 2017-03, revert fee schedule to amounts prior to August 7th, and rescind any new fees for planning, zoning, and subdivision entitlements and automation, refer back to Development Services for review presentation to Planning and Zoning, and conduct public outreach with the constituents these fees will impact. In addition, please bring back to the board a public participation plan for review and approval.
Second.
Amended second.
Amended second.
I have a question, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you. I'd like to speak for Mr. Walsh. This process you went through, you took into account that it's been years since we've updated our fees, and if I'm correct, the, we've been subsidizing these people who are getting these permits, is that correct?
That is correct.
And the information that you gleaned before and put together shouldn't change from, from when you put it together to the day on the amount of fees, should it?
As far, if I may, Chairman Watson, Supervisor Johnson, as far as the county's expense to process the fees, the information that we'll get back will be similar to what we presented previously. Just to give some, some hard numbers as far as the, the question as far as subsidizing, currently, planning and zoning fees for the services rendered, the fees cover about 30 percent of the cost that, that the services require. Currently, the Planning and Zoning Commission, or the Planning and Zoning Department, we run, our expenses are right around 1.5 million annually, and we're bringing in right around, just under $100,000 annually. The last couple of years, that's gone up. This, in 17, we brought in $124,000 for fees. So to answer the question, we are, there is a subsidizing of those permits being done, but we would be happy, and I think this would be a good opportunity to get the board's direction on how to proceed with those. Initially, when we started this process, we were going for 100 percent recapture of the cost to provide the services, and that, those were the numbers that were presented to the board. It's definitely a policy decision on how much we want to recapture those, if we want a full recapture, or if we want to have a portion subsidized by the general fund.
So I guess the, we're going to pay for it one way or the other. Everybody through their property tax is going to pay for these permits, or the people pulling the permits are going to pay for them themselves. That'd be a down and dirty way to say it?
I think that would be a fair analysis, correct.
All right, those are the only questions I had, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Johnson. Supervisor Angus.
Mr. Walsh, before the August 7th meeting, when you came up here and we talked about the process, and I really didn't want to get into this now, but since it's been brought up, you told us that planning and zoning, the Building Advisory Code, that they were all for this, but that really wasn't true. There were, it was spoken at great length about the different options that you guys had. They didn't say that they wanted it to be, go up as much as you had presented. It was about 35 percent. So all I'm asking today, because I do believe, again, I'm not saying anything, anybody did anything purposely wrong, but it was confusing, there was some misunderstanding and, and wrong information imparted. I'll say it like that. So with all that in mind, all I'm asking, I'm not saying that we shouldn't have fees, I'm just saying that it goes back and that you go by statute, there's a state statute that covers taxes and fees, Statute 11-251-dot-13, and please read that because some of these things were not done correctly, such as if the board proposes to increase the rate of an existing tax or fee on a business, provide written notice of the proposed increase on the homepage of the county's website at least 60 days before the date. I don't think that was done. I know that was done in your office, but I'm just saying that let's do it right so that these people, it's not confusing when people go in to get their fees, and some of them are outrageous and do seem arbitrary, and if there is a need, then we better do a much better job of explaining ourselves. And so I still am with my motion that we start over and we do it right.
That's already, that's already?
Yeah, the motion's already made.
Right. Motion has not changed since amended. Correct. Any further discussion? There being no further discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we'll move on to the public hearing for item number 68. The same number of people that spoke to item number 67 have chosen to spoke to 68. As you can see, there's a movement by the board to make some changes, but I'll ask each one of those people if they would like to speak. If you would like to speak, come on up and speak. If you would like to just stand up and say whatever, that's fine also. Richard Gant, Richard Grant?
No, I'm along with you guys now.
Thank you. Mike Fortino?
I'm passing the baton on to this lady right here.
Thank you. Samuel Flinner? Mr. Flinner? Cheryl Flinner?
I speak for her.
Yes, certainly.
Well, the question I have is...
Randy Flinner, 1161961 Rets Road. Question I have is if, you're all in favor of listening to everybody say, as the gentleman stated earlier, he had to keep them separate. So if everybody's in agreement of just being quiet because they already spoke their piece, why is it having to be kept separate? You know, you're trying to say that each one is separate from the other, and you have to deal with them separately. So if Supervisor Angus is willing to stipulate that they're willing to go back and revise the regulations because there was, we'll say misconduct, then wouldn't there be the same?
Mr. Chairman, I don't, I want to be clear on a couple allegations that were made, one by Ms. Esposito and one by this gentleman. There was no misconduct. We fully complied with the requirements of state law on the advertising and on everything else that was done in relation to establishing this fee. The only thing that's being contemplated right now is whether they were too high or whether the...
My choice of bad words.
Sir, or whether the county wants to go and expand the outreach program and expand the outreach program to the public. And what the board did on the last item was they voted to expand the outreach program to where planning and zoning is going to develop a public participation plan and bring that back to the board for consideration. So the board ensures itself that the outreach is proper, is proper in their eyes, and so I appreciate, and sir, I apologize for interrupting you, I just don't want any misinformation and the thought out there that we did something illegal or immoral with regard to state law.
I'm not referring illegal or anything, just, okay, something went awry, and...
No, the board wants to expand the outreach and consideration, and they believe that the fees that were established could potentially be too high. And the other thing is, the reason they have to become separate, considered separately is that was the way it was agendized, and there were some things in Mrs.'s...
Aren't we doing the same thing in...
No, no, one of them actually goes through the Planning and Zoning Commission, and the other one goes through the Building Advisory Board, and that's what actually needs to be separate.
Okay, two separate entities, but aren't we doing the same thing?
Mike, can I, can I explain since my agenda, it's, this is just the technical way. There were two agenda items when we voted on them, so we have to vote, that's, that's all it is. Don't worry. Okay? That's, that's all it is. It's, one is the Building Code, one's Planning and Zoning, so this is just how we have to do it for our ordinances, okay? Because it became an ordinance.
Thank you.
And I also want to say, I never said there was misconduct. I said that I didn't like the way the process was done, and I think I went overboard to say that there was, nothing was done intentionally, everything was done in good faith.
And I assure you, if there had been any implication of wrongdoing or breaking the law, this board would have been the first to investigate that. So any indication or thought that that occurred is incorrect, but if you've got proof, or if you've got an idea of proof, bring it to me, and we'll speak face-to-face. How's that?
I'm not a very good speaker.
Well, we can speak face-to-face. Vern Fisher, would you like to speak?
I'd just say thank you and appreciate the outreach that you're discussing, and if citizens can be involved, I'd like to go along on ways in support of all your actions. Thank you.
Thank you, Vern. Mr. Custer?
Thank you for listening to us.
Certainly. Thank you. Folks in the back, everybody good shape? Very good. Satisfied?
I'm satisfied.
Supervisor Angus?
Just me.
Okay.
I want to speak.
Certainly. No doubt that you will probably need to speak to this item.
Jennifer Jones Esposito, and yes, I did actually sign up to speak to this item. I was on the Planning and Zoning Board in court site, so I do know a thing or two.
I'm sorry, did, did you give your name and address to the...
Yes, Jennifer Jones Esposito. I did give my name, and my address has been previously stated.
Thank you.
Thank you. I was on the court site Planning and Zoning Board, so I do know a thing or two about planning and zoning. One of the things that I, and I just want to make this clear, I did not say anything illegal was done. I said I wasn't sure if things were done properly, for instance, it being posted on the website, as Supervisor Angus mentioned. I wasn't sure, but thank you for clarifying that you affirm it wasn't. It was done properly. I'm not disputing that there may be a need for increasing the fees, and as LeAnn had said earlier, talking about the finances of the average median income for the county, you know, if you live in the city, you are usually going under the city building code. It's the roughly 40 percent, I believe, of us who live outside the city limits that are subject to county planning and zoning and county planning and zoning fees. And I would say it's a fairly safe bet that the median, median income of the county outlying areas is less than that of the county as a whole. And given that the fees have not been raised in roughly a decade, and that's somebody's fault, I don't think they should be raised more than the cost of living increase that our veterans and our elderly have received on their social security or their pensions. If they're only getting a very tiny cost of living increase, I don't think that planning and zoning fees should increase, should be larger than what has been increased for social security for the residents living in those areas. Supervisor Angus made the, made a statement about wrong information. One of the things that I believe was wrong information at the, at the meeting where this was passed was that the builders and contractors in the county were part of this process. My son-in-law is an electrical contractor here. He had no idea. As a matter of fact, since that meeting where you also passed the budget, I have yet to talk to a single contractor who was aware this was happening or participated in the process. I think that was a false statement made to the board. That's my opinion. It's not legally binding, it's just my opinion. Furthermore, Mr. Hendricks, I believe it's been at least a year since Supervisor Moss and this board instructed you to come back to them with a cohesive definition for what constitutes a kennel in this county, because under your current ordinances, you have three different and disparate definitions. Yet, you seem to think it's okay to raise the permit fee for something for which you don't even have a singular definition and have had months to bring back to the board. You, sir, are non-feasant. Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to speak?
Okay.
I'll close the public hearing.
Okay, before I make my motion, so it doesn't rattle, go on and on. So in this one, it doesn't go to planning and zoning, it just goes to the Building Code Advisory Board for this one? Okay. So this motion is to repeal Mojave County Ordinance 2017-04 and revert fee schedule to amounts prior to August 7th and rescind any new fees or increased fees for services provided through Mojave County Building Code, and refer back to the Building Code Advisory Board and conduct public outreach with the constituents these fees will impact, and please bring back to the board a public participation plan for review and approval. And please bring back to the board a public participation plan for review and approval.
That's your motion?
That's the motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion?
I have a question, Mr. Johnson.
Certainly Supervisor Johnson?
Thank you. Supervisor Angus provided us with some backup that was appreciated from the meeting of the Building Advisory Code Committee. And I noticed in there, at least unless I read it wrong, that they agreed with the fees, but they wanted them split up. And that because we've taken so long on this now, that I think the second, which will bring us to where the fees are today, was supposed to be done in January of eighteen. Is that correct?
I don't believe that's correct. But I do have Tim off here to answer that question.
Chairman Watson, Supervisor Johnson, that is, the Building Code Advisory Board meeting, the Building Code Advisory Board, when they met, they reviewed the fees and they did recommend an initial, an initial plan review fee of thirty-five percent rather than the sixty-five percent that Development Services recommended. But they also recommended that it be reviewed again in another six months, which would have been around the January timeframe, to look at where the fees were and to possibly recommend the full sixty-five percent.
That was in April.
Correct.
But they've met again. And what did they say in September?
In September, they met again and they discussed it and they actually moved to rescind the fees in, at their September meeting, to rescind those fees and to basically do this process. Go through and review the fees and bring them back for that.
Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification. Does that answer your question Supervisor Johnson?
Yes, that answered it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I have just a tidbit of information. We hear constantly that everybody is on a fixed income. And that is true. Many of us are on fixed incomes. But we need to look at our fees. We need to adjust our fees. I would suggest that we also do that in a relationship to those increases that those fixed income folks are going to. So that would put it from '08 to now in the fifteen to twenty percent range. The compound addition of social security and other entitlements since 2008 exceed fifteen percent. Just a tidbit of information.
So statute that says that they can only collect what they need to use, is that true?
Yes, that's correct.
So, you know, all of that work together, that's hopefully what we're going to come up with, the right number.
The right number. That's all we're, that's all of us are seeking. All of us are seeking that, correct? Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried.
Aye.
Moving on to the regular agenda. Item number sixty-nine, discussion, possible action, five-year capital building improvement program for Mojave County Courts. Mr. Lutowski?
Good afternoon, Chairman Watson, members of the board. The Public Works Department, in concert with Mojave County Courts, presents this suggested five-year program specific to the courts' facilities. Now, the courts operate out of five county buildings encompassing one hundred and three thousand square feet. And as part of this near-term program, it does lay forth an unconstrained program by which it would provide the courts with about one hundred and sixty-two thousand square feet of working space. And in the short term, that would suffice to provide for the courts' near-term operations from the point at the end of the five-year program through, you know, at least a relatively sustained period. The program lays forth a very practical plan. It, one, takes in consideration the board-directed construction of the new addition, Kingman Courthouse, adjacent to Historic Court. Also, and this is where it gets to be unconstrained, it does identify immediately after construction, middle part of FY 2021, the remodel of the Historic Courthouse. And that is per the current design that has been just recently completed. And then it also identifies one other item. With the completion of the Historic Courthouse remodel, it would enable the Superior Courts, I just use the term withdraw, withdraw from the Surbat Justice Court here in Kingman as those personnel and operations can relocate then to the Kingman Superior Court, the legacy site encompassing Historic Court as well as the new addition. And that is the extent to which staff does put forward the suggested five-year program as requested by the board.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question of Mr. Lutowski.
Yes, Supervisor Johnson, go right ahead.
Thank you. Thanks for putting that together, Mr. Lutowski. The question I have is, you're talking about the remodel of the elder court building we have. Am I correct that the quarter cent sales tax is fully consumed with the new building?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Watson, we had positioned the new building, the new addition, in such a way that the estimated, and I do underscore estimated, cost of construction with a relatively conservative approach toward forecasting available revenue would in fact more or less consume the available revenue under the existing quarter cent sales tax. But that is on the premise of a very conservative revenue estimate supplied by finance as well as a conservative cost estimate supplied by public works. So there may be an opportunity and we just need to see where everything falls when it's procured for some level of funding. But this program does not acknowledge any particular revenue sources.
Okay, I guess my question was, I think the board was looking at possibly, with the new court being built, the shutting down of some existing buildings that we no longer needed. Are you suggesting that we have to find additional funds to remodel the old court building now? Are you coming back with more money instead of cutting funds?
Supervisor Johnson, the program does represent the Historic Courthouse remodel. And at this point, the board has not identified funds for that particular remodel. However, if the remodel were to move forward in consultation with Mojave County Courts, they would be in a position to withdraw from the Surbat Justice Court.
Okay, I mean, I appreciate you guys bringing everything forward, but for the other board members, I was looking at, you know, by building a new court building, we would obviously free up space that we weren't using and maybe be able to, you know, sell it or use it with some other department or something. It's not my intention to say, I don't want to accept something today that says, that obligates us to have to find more revenue to remodel the old court. That wasn't my idea. I mean, that's something for discussion at a later time. So I don't know how we want to, I mean, I would, I think we would accept a report saying this is what our five-year plan is. But I think we'd have to look at what other buildings we want to have done and make a priority list because we don't have the funding to do that. I don't want to give anybody false hope that that's something we're going to do. I don't know if that makes sense to everybody else.
Thank you Supervisor Johnson. Yes, it does make sense.
Mr. Chairman, if you want, I mean, I'll make a motion to accept the report with, you know, no action taken.
Okay. We have a motion for acceptance.
Second.
Second. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carried. Item number seventy, set a public hearing on November 20th, 2017 for the Benegas Ranch Road from South Line of the Section 11 to the South Line of Section 13, approximately 1.25 miles, and Benegas crossing from Benegas Ranch Road to State Route 93, approximately .43 miles, until abandoned and vacated in accordance with the purpose of accepting the roadway in the Mojave County Road Maintenance Program for regular maintenance only to the degree of improvement as a gravel roadway. This particular item is in my district, in the big sandy area, and I'll move for acceptance.
Second.
Move for public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Set a public hearing on, this is item number seventy-one, set a public hearing on November 20th, 2017 regarding the acceptance of Commerce Way from Mojave Airport Drive to Bonanza Way, Columbus Way from Commerce Lane to Railroad Drive, Bonanza from Shipping Lane to Railroad Drive and Industrial Boulevard, from Santa Fe Drive to nine hundred and forty feet south, totaling 1.6 miles into the Mojave County Regular Road Maintenance System as a paved roadway. Further direct the Mojave County Engineer to file with the Board of Supervisors a report and a map of the proposed roadway and give proper notice of the public hearing. This is also in my district. And I've got, I'll make a motion for acceptance, set a public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, but I do have a question. Administrator Hendricks, didn't at one point in time we accepted a number of those roads in the airport area indicating that was pretty much what we were going to accept?
Mr. Chairman, that is correct. Now, the agreement with the Airport Authority, at least as a framework to move forward with any recommendations to the board, was that we would accept a group of roads that provided the infrastructure for the entire, for the majority of the airport and any roads that would be accepted thereafter would be brought up to county standards at no cost to the county. Now, this particular area is in the northwest portion of the airport and it's within that new developed area. And these roads were actually designed and constructed and Steve's verified, even though they're four years, it's several years after the fact, that these roads were actually, in accordance with the template, are being brought forward to the board in accordance with the template that we discussed with the Airport Authority.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we're still within that same agreement.
Yes.
Is that... Is that correct?
Chairman Watson, yes, that is correct. That this represents a subset of roadways within the airport area that were indeed laid out and constructed to county standards in association with the Airport Authority, the other roads being those roads east of Shipping Lane. Chairman Watson and members of the board, with all due respect, staff has made a request to pull this item. And we only make that request on premise that there is one other roadway, Railroad Drive, an eight-hundred-foot section by which staff had the inaccurate description of the road link by which we inspected the roadway. We found the roadway deficient, but staff had inspected the wrong segment of Railroad Drive. And in conferring with the applicant, the applicant has absolutely no objection to reconsidering, setting the public hearing at the next board meeting. So essentially, just delay the process by a board meeting. So instead of setting the public meeting for next meeting, we would bring back this very item at the next meeting to set the public hearing for the first meeting in December. But again, at the board's discretion, that way we can just present the entire package for board consideration.
Okay, I'll do that. I'll rescind my motion.
Yes, I will, my second.
And make a motion for reconsideration at the... What would be the proper date for that, Mr. Lutowski? For reconsideration?
Supervisor Watson, staff is very much ready to re-agendize this for the November 20th meeting.
Okay, reconsider it to November 20th? Okay.
That's correct. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to reconsider for November 20.
Second.
And there's a second. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Item seventy-two, set a public hearing on November 20th, 2017 regarding the petition to establish an approximately 1.44-mile-long section of Skipper Boulevard in White Hills Road to Spear Boulevard, Spear Boulevard from Skipper Road to Senator Boulevard and Senator Boulevard to Spear Boulevard to Indian Peak Drive, located in the White Hills area as a county highway. This is brought to us by the Transportation Commission, recommended to accept the petition. And this is in District Four, I believe. Is that correct?
Yes. Chairman Watson, Mojave County has been able to accept some millings that's been stored on White Hills Road just east of Highway 93. And it's the recommendation that the county expend approximately $200,000 to use these millings to pave these, this, it's one road in White Hills that just kind of meanders around with all these different names. And it would remedy a disconnect between our subdivision where we do maintain roads, but they're not connected to a county road.
Okay.
So it's a benefit to White Hills and to Mojave County plus it fixes a problem from years ago.
Very good.
So there's no other discussion, I'd make a motion to approve setting a public hearing for that.
And I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. On to seventy-five. Discussion, possible action, authorize the chairman to sign into MOU between Kane County, Mojave County, Kanab City, and the Town of Fredonia. And also appoint a board member as representative from Mojave County to sit on this coalition. I'll make a motion for... For that item.
Chairman Watson, do we also have to appoint someone during the same motion?
Probably not necessary.
Since Buster Johnson brought this forward, is it his want to be the board member to represent Mojave County on this coalition?
Probably it'd be a good idea to ask him. Supervisor Johnson?
Yes, they, they've gotten ahold of me because of the Arizona-Utah Coalition that we have to form this coalition for more specific area economic development. And that's why I worked with them to do the MOU and our county attorney has approved the MOU. And so now we're at the point where we just need to accept the MOU and sign if we want. And, you know, I'll serve gladly if that's what you want me to do. But I just brought it forward for, you know, for approval by the board. We need to have it.
Would you like to serve on that board?
Sure, I can serve. They allow phone calls, so I don't have to drive all the way up there all the time.
Okay, that answers the question. Thank you very much. So you could include that if you'd like.
Then I'll make a motion to authorize chairman to sign the MOU between Kane County, Mojave County, Kanab City, and Town of Fredonia and to appoint Buster Johnson as a representative from Mojave County to sit on the coalition. Second.
And a second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. On to item number seventy-six, discussion, possible action, authority and direction for the county administrator Hendricks and legal counsel to settle... administrator Hendricks and legal counsel to settle all outstanding issues in Maricopa County Superior Court Case Number LC 2014-000624-001.
I make a motion to grant the county manager and legal counsel the authority to settle the outstanding issues in Maricopa County Superior Court Case Number LC 2014-000624-001 is directed in executive session.
Motion?
Second.
Second. Discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Item number 77, discussion, possible action regarding High Ground's request for representation from the Mojave County Water Authority.
Chairman Watson, I move that we approve the request by High Ground Inc. for representation from Mojave County Water Authority. Second.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Item 78, review and explain the conflict of interest request related to Riley Carlock and Applewhite when Freeport mineral to allow Cheryl Sweeney and Riley Carlock and Applewhite to continue representing the county in water issues.
Chairman Watson?
Deputy Attorney Esplin?
What I would ask is that the board move to allow Cheryl Sweeney and Riley Carlock and Applewhite to continue representing the county in water issues.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. And item 79, Toys for Tots has already been done. Hurrah!
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.